Media check, media check, media check. Is that clean? Okay.
You think you can see up there?
Right there.
Oh, yeah, I thought you were looking up. I was like, I can't see that. Sit over there.
Right there.
How are you, Ms. Bates? I saw your beautiful photo with the wedding and your family. It's probably been a week or more, but it was pretty.
I call to order the December 10th, 2018 regular business meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansley?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morosky?
Present.
President Jones?
Here. Thank you. I need a motion to revise the agenda.
So moves.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay.
Okay, cool.
All right. We, uh, Mrs. Bates reminded me, in terms of revision of the agenda, we added a resolution for approval tonight, and we will need to do a 48-hour waiver, but we will do that when we approach that item. Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting November 28th, 2018, regular business meeting, November 28th, 2018. Second? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose? Anyone have any kudos? Mr. Morosky and then Mr. Davis.
Go Mr. Davis first, I gotta get it.
Okay, Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis?
I just want to give kudos to the Rockdale tumbling team who absolutely smashed the Cincinnati Recreation Commission's tumbling competition Friday night. I mean, I think they got first or second in every event. I was at a basketball game, I would've been there, but I definitely want, I definitely told the young ladies that I would've mentioned them tonight, so congratulations to Rockdale's tumbling team.
Here, here. Thank you. Mr. Morosky?
I have a couple kudos. My first kudos is to Superintendent Mitchell's leadership team and our curriculum department. I saw a deputy superintendent and a lot of assistant superintendents, reading specialists in our district who worked with our kids at the All Children Thrive Learning Session last week, and we were extremely well represented. I was there on behalf of my job with Children's Hospital, and it was a lot of healthcare providers, and Cincinnati Public was highlighted throughout the entire presentation as far as our collaboration with Children's Hospital and all the good efforts that we put forward to get kids to grade-appropriate reading levels. I was just really, really proud and sort of boastful about how many people from CPS were there, so that was really awesome, and I think people need to know how much continuous learning and how in the community our team is. Second, on Saturday, I went to Pleasant Ridge Montessori where the students and teachers organized a craft fair, the very first ever craft fair to support the yearbook club, and it was really, really awesome, and I got about half of my Christmas shopping done. So thank you to the kids and the school.
Thank you. Mr. Messer?
Yes, I want to shout out, give kudos to Lee Black from SCPA.
Yes.
He had eight of his students accepted to the honors bands recently at EKU, but this isn't kind of the one-time thing, he's had lots of students accepted, and it just speaks to the quality of program because it is a competitive process, and they take the best of the best, and he got quite a number by comparison to all the number of schools that went there. So kudos to Lee and the work that he does at SCPA. And then another kudos to SCPA, I guess it's an SCPA day. I thoroughly enjoyed, as did my children and our entire family actually, the Nutcracker on Friday night, and I loved the diversity of the children, the diversity of the audience, and I loved that people around me said, wow, this is as good as Music Hall, which is a big thing, and so just a really wonderful event that they do that highlights the talent to sold-out crowds all week and long. I think they're gonna have to look for a bigger spot for that in the future, but kudos to all the students and the hard work that they put into that.
Thank you. Any other kudos?
Oh, I'll do one.
Ms. Copeland-Dansley?
I want to give a kudos to whomever is responsible for this beautiful space that we are sitting in right now. This is the first time that I've been in since the remodel and renovation has been done, and this is a very nice space, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes, I have three retirements to acknowledge this evening. All civil service personnel, Dorothy A. Campbell, Teresa J. Damon, and David A. Jenkins. We would like to thank you for your service to our children and wish you well in your retirement, and congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. We are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak, and our treasurer, Ms. Wagner, will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak, and I'll read the first three. Marlena Brookfield, John Holland, and Pamela Bowers.
Good evening again. I just had a couple of suggestions tonight regarding the Mercy campus space. One came from a conversation this morning with Mr. Grant, principal at Westwood School. I was curious to know the kids that are doing the entrepreneurial program there, I know some of them have Etsy shops, they're getting started in being business people, and so I asked, do you track whether they keep up with it when they go to high school? So he said, you know, there's really no high school focus right now that they can transition into with the entrepreneurial program, so there's just one idea. And my second one is, I would be remiss if, as a Dater high school parent, I didn't say, we could deal with some more college prep seats on the West Side just for kids who may see that trajectory in their future. So just a couple ideas I wanted to throw out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holland?
Good evening, I'm John Holland, Chair of the LSDMC at Dater, and this summer we sent a letter to Laura Mitchell, Superintendent, and Carolyn Jones concerning our two proposals for Dater and the Mercy programs. We feel that the Dater College Preparatory Program would do well at Mercy, and we would like to see that program transferred over there and enlarge and attract and keep more West Side students on the West Side. Also, the neighborhood is changing a lot, and there are a lot of immigrant students coming into the neighborhood, and we think a school for the English as a second language would be very good. It would be more welcoming for the families in that area. What would happen with the old Dater? We think a career academy, technology, something to do with computers would fit very well in that school considering it at one time was a vocational building and our many large classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Pam Bowers, and I am a parent, resident, and a partner in Cincinnati Public Schools. Everybody's on the kick with the Mercy building, so I'm just gonna put my plug in for Gamble. I'm a parent of a student who receives a combination at Gamble. Gamble is about 45% to 50% special ed, either IEPs or 504. With that being said, I am very concerned about our space there. Currently, we have new four classrooms for preschool. We have about 500, maybe a little bit less, students, but we had a waiting list this year that we could've took more students if we had the space. Gamble Montessori High School is in a middle school building that has not been redesigned to fit the high school bodies that are in that building. Regardless of what the Facilities Master Plan says, supposed to be 645 or 50 kids in that building, those must've been little kids. It was not for high school kids, nor is it set up for a Montessori curriculum-type teaching. Gamble, if you guys are not going to move us to Mercy, I'm gonna challenge you as a resident who supported the Facilities Master Plan and a taxpayer who supported the Facilities Master Plan. Gamble was never included in that plan. It was added at the end, and therefore, we kind of got something mixed-matched together in a middle school building. We are not a middle school. So therefore, my challenge to the board is, what will you do with Gamble Montessori if we are not going to Mercy? I need to know as a parent, a taxpayer, to continue to support Cincinnati Public Schools, you guys have to remember that we didn't forget about you guys when we passed the levy. Thank you.
Thank you. Stefan Pryor and Julie Sellers?
How y'all doing? Good evening.
Good evening.
The Mercy campus, y'all need to do Skills for Life. What is Skills for Life? Have a program over there to teach you how to cook. Maybe that I ask you, we don't know how to cook. We need some survival tips with advice for them at the campus of Mercy. If y'all do do that Mercy, what do y'all do with it? Skills for Life.
Start my, start my minutes over. Skills, y'all did it on purpose too. Skills for Life, that's what I said. Let's do that at Mercy Campus. Ms. Laura Mitchell, the FC money they gave y'all to build a stadium, when y'all gonna build this stadium and where it's gonna be at, and how much they get y'all? Y'all can respond back to them if y'all like, but I'm gonna give you a little history today. This is after-school program we in today. My little nephew, he's on medicine, ADHD medicine. That came in the 1980s. It was ADD. How can some medicine make a child pay attention? We need to stop giving these kids this medicine in school. We don't talk about that. That's what's going on in these schools right now. They going and shooting in these class, they on medicine. When is we gonna stop giving these baby medicine? Do y'all have the power to do that? Y'all help a lot of communities out too. If this medicine stop giving out, making these pharmaceutical business, pharmaceutical big medicines rich off medicine. It don't do nothing, but don't help you at all. Stop your kidneys. These babies shouldn't be on medicine, y'all. We vote y'all in office, do a job. We know sometime in a, in a, in a, in a group, it'll all be one bad apple, but one bad apple make the whole tree rotten. Yes. So y'all gotta rebuild. Build up relationships in the community. Come out. Y'all never come out y'all seats. Y'all don't even go in the community and walk. Go in the communities. Know what's going on. Kids on medicine? How you gonna have 10 fights at one time? You gotta be on medicine. It was 10 fights, all girls, at one time, in the streets. That's medicine. But I'm gonna let y'all go. I can keep going on and on in these streets. It's the medicine in these streets y'all giving these babies in school, that's where it starts at. I think the sign language over there understanding be better, but we gotta stop giving these babies medicine, y'all. Ain't not gonna be fine. It ain't. Y'all living very well, rich. Messer House, his bathroom cost $10,000, that's for the toilet bowl. Y'all living well up here. Trust me, y'all. Y'all gotta think about this. No more medicine. All right? Thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Morosky, did you have a question, or we typically don't respond?
No, I know. I was just wondering if we could, if, Phyllis, if we could take our friend's email and get him some info about the FCC stadium, because we have been kind of public about that, but just like a brief, here's what's going on and here's where we want to gather input.
If you want to make that an assignment at the end, that would be great. Okay.
Good evening.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent and Treasurer. I am here this evening to address the board about the parking situation at SCPA. This morning, a car was speeding and hit a student on her way into the building. It did not hit the news at all today. Teachers were also in the same crosswalk they were crossing at the same time as the student, and the student was in the crosswalk when it happened. The student remained with the student until the medics arrived, and she was injured during that, but it was a hit skip, and the teachers did get the license plate number. I hope that the district follows up with the police to make sure that they find who hit the student as she was crossing to get to SCPA. I know that CPS has done as much as they can to get the SCPA staff and students their parking, but something needs to be done, and I have written a letter to the mayor and to city council that I would like to share with you this evening because this has been going on for six months now, and it's unacceptable that we have not had a resolution, and I believe that the mayor and the city council can help to put pressure onto 3CDC to solve this problem. Ever since we found out about the parking, I said that what is it gonna take for the teachers and students to get their parking if someone to get hit and injured or killed? Today, we were lucky, she was not killed, but tomorrow, it could be someone else that is killed because the cars that cross there are speeding so fast, and it's over six lanes of traffic that they have to cross. But it's been several months since CFT asked for, this is a letter that I have to Mayor John Cranley and the members of Cincinnati City Council. It's been several months now since CFT asked for your help on behalf of the teacher, staff, and some students of SCPA. The SCPA community is still waiting for the city to require 3CDC to keep its 2008 promise to provide 250 parking spaces in the Washington Park Garage for the SCPA staff and students. The history of 3CDC's broken promises described in an op-ed published in The Inquirer on September 20th that I submitted, and since then, there has been no meaningful progress in negotiations between CPS and 3CDC. Teachers, staff, and students who have been able to park in the Washington Park Garage have been relegated to the WCET garage, which we understand is slated for demolition. It's a longer walk across a very busy street, often in the dark and bad weather. I have pictures of the parking garage where it is crumbling and there is concrete falling on employees' cars as they are parked there during the day. Today, the dangerous shortcomings of that arrangement became all too clear. An SCPA student arriving in the early morning gloom was stuck by a car on Central Parkway. The dangerous crossing of Central Parkway by SCPA students and staff would not be necessary if 3CDC's decision kept its promise to SCPA. Instead, 3CDC transferred spaces in the garage promised to SCPA to tenants of tax-abated private developers and landlords. Landlords and developers who do not pay their fair share of taxes win, while CFT's members and the students of CPS are the losers. Your failure to stand up to 3CDC and to stand up for the teachers, students, and staff at SCPA is deeply disappointing. It will not be forgotten by our members. Again, we urge you to require 3CDC to keep its promise to CPS and the SCPA community. It's obvious that 3CDC will never honor its obligations to SCPA unless compelled to do so by the city, and I hope that through all of your relationships with the city that you will be able to help to move this forward, but it's really becoming a situation that is not acceptable for students or for staff, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers.
I will send a copy tomorrow to everybody.
Superintendent Mitchell, would you please introduce our first presentation?
I would be happy to. So this evening, we're going to ask Liz Bloom to come forward from Community Building Institute. Over the last several months, Liz Bloom and her team entered into several community conversations in which board members attended regarding some ideas related to the new Mercy campus that is planned to open, scheduled to open in August 2019. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is to make the board aware of the ideas that came out of those community conversations. At this point, the administration is not bringing forward any suggestions or recommendations. This is just for the board to be able to hear a summary of those findings. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Again, my name is Liz Bloom with the Community Building Institute, and I want to thank you all for the opportunity that this presented. We spent some time in Westwood, and it was great, so I also want to thank the folks in Westwood who co-sponsored the sessions with us. They were very helpful. Okay, I'm gonna do the clicker now. So I'm gonna talk really quickly about the process. We did four open public community meetings and talked to over 150 people. We talked to Mercy alums, we talked to Westwood residents, we talked to parents, and we had a community-wide session. All three of those sessions were in Westwood, and we had a community-wide session that was at Centos, thinking that maybe other folks would come, and I can tell you that even the contingent at Centos was all from Westwood. So what that says to me is they care very deeply about this building and the outcome of this process. We also had four really great conversations with young people. We talked to fifth and sixth graders at Westwood Elementary School who will be high school students because we wanted to hear what they had to say and what they were thinking about what it's gonna be like to be in high school. We talked to seventh and eighth graders, who are a rambunctious bunch, I will say that, at West High. We also talked to 11th and 12th graders at West High, and I had a chance to talk with the principal at the end of that morning, and I said, whatever they do to get the seventh and eighth graders to become those wonderful 11th and 12th graders, they deserve a lot of credit and kudos for that. We also had a great conversation with 11th and 12th graders at Gamble, and all of the student conversations were just wonderful. They were really insightful conversations. In addition to the, on the sessions with students and sessions in person, we also had the thought exchange, which you all have used before, was open, and we got additional feedback online from people who couldn't come to a session, something else to say. And as I said, the Westwood Coalition co-sponsored all the sessions with CBI, which was great because they certainly know their neighborhood better than we do. They were, they made sure that we got Mercy alums in the room, they made sure that we got parents who are thinking about school, who have kids in school there, so we really appreciate the support we got from the Coalition. They were great. And I want to thank CPS board members, almost all of you were at some or all of the sessions, and you're all good listeners. You listen, and we appreciate that. So we, I'm gonna characterize what we heard in, in four kinds of ways. People talked about what an important place the Mercy campus is to them. People talked about what they hope for the school. They talked about the culture of the place, which is a little different than the academics of the place, and then they talked about the community, and I want to talk in those kind of ways for you. The Mercy campus is an incredibly important asset to Westwood. It is a beautiful building, it is beautiful grounds, and it's a really great, unique opportunity for CPS to maintain as educational institution. I think people feel really strongly about that. It's got deep roots in the community. Generations of families have sent their children there, and people remember their mother and their grandmother and their daughters, and that really means something to everybody. The building and the grounds are important to people, both the building and the grounds, they are both assets, and the neighborhood feels strongly that both of those things need to be sort of maintained, preserved, and be an important part of what the building is going forward. There are also really high expectations for what might become at this Westwood campus, and I think people express that in all kinds of different ways. The housing... The housing that is around the Westwood campus is also a really beautiful part of Westwood, and I think neighbors want to make sure that whatever happens at the school stays an enhancement to the neighborhood around the school. The site and the vicinity are pedestrian-oriented, have been largely pedestrian-oriented, and I think that there's both an interest and maybe a need to maintain that pedestrian orientation. These are little neighborhood streets, and parking is going to become an issue, and people have lots of recall of when everybody walked to school. So, I'm not sure we can totally accomplish that, but people want to make sure that we understand that the streets are small and parking will become an issue. There's a spirit in this place and in this building, and people want to make sure that in some kind of way, that spirit, both for the school and the community, gets preserved. We ask people what they hoped for and what they hoped for their children and what they thought success for their children felt like and looked like, and they describe that when they talk about schools. They want this to be an academically rigorous school. There's absolutely this conversation about Walnut Hills West, and I think when people say that, what they mean is that they want the school to be academically rigorous, and they want their kids to be successful. And if you unpack it a little bit more, I think that they describe what that means in Westwood maybe differently than what Walnut Hills is all about, but I think it's important to them that this is a school that students aspire to be at and that they make sure that there's a real focus on professional pathways, making sure that students get aware of lots of different professions, and that maybe even there are co-op opportunities. And I appreciated the comment earlier tonight about entrepreneurial opportunities. People describe this building in that way. They talk about professional experience, professional expertise, exposing children to lots of different kinds of career paths, and then connecting them to those paths. And I think that was a pretty intentional part of the conversation. They also talk about a technology-rich building, and students in particular talked about a lot of hands-on learning opportunities, labs, art rooms, music rooms, all those kind of spaces that are maybe extra classroom spaces where children get a hands-on opportunity. Students, again, in particular, also talked about the importance of what I'm going to call flex space outside of classroom space, space that they can do teamwork, space that they can study in, space that they can socialize with their friends outside of the classroom but in the school. So, those are the kinds of comments that we heard about the school from students. They want an environment, as you might imagine, that feels safe, but also feels like it's theirs, right? Theirs, the students, that it is a place that they belong, and it is theirs. There was absolutely a contingent of folks, some of whom you have heard tonight, who lobbied to have Gamble in the building. And another comment earlier on was about life skills. There is definitely this conversation about financial literacy, life skills, trades, I think also connected to this notion of professional experience and getting students exposed to lots of different kinds of professional backgrounds and environments. And the students want better lunches, I'm just going to say it. I have the opportunity. Culture is a little bit different than academics at the building. There was also a tremendous amount of conversation, both at West High and at Gamble, about this sense of community. Mercy alums talked about the same thing, that it's really important for students to feel supported and to support each other. That image and the quality of what happens at this building is important to students who are there because they want to feel like they're doing an important job. There needs to be enough adults in the building to deal with everything from significant mental health challenges to daily drama. That's one of the things that the students at Gamble were very articulate about talking about, that they feel like if they need something, or if they need somebody, or if they need an ear, there's somebody there who can provide that kind of support. I think based on all of the conversations from lots of different perspectives, it's important that this building be west-side centric. What I mean by that is maybe it's a west-side catchment area. This is a building and a place that's very connected to this community, and I think if it could feel like it was serving this community, that's important to people. People want people, students, parents, community members want challenging academics, they want academic rigor, but they also want students to feel like they're supported and they're helped to get there, and that there is some learning that could take place out in the community, get kids out of the building, get them connected to area businesses, get them connected to other kinds of neighborhood partners. If only I could make that map bigger. So, the Mercy campus is right in the center of Westwood. It's a stone's throw from the town hall. It's very close to all the sort of center of Westwood, and it needs to be an important sort of anchor and asset in the community. Westwood residents and community leadership clearly care about this building, they care about this outcome, and they care about what the school is going to be like going forward. And I think that having them engage in the process all along is going to be important, and I think that's both to all the Westwood folks who said they want to be part of it. I would challenge them to stay part of it and stay in the building and keep supporting the school and the families that are there. I think that people hope that this building will also be part of what makes Westwood a neighborhood of choice, part of what makes Westwood a wonderful neighborhood to the whole rest of the world. And I think that there's a strong sense that if this is a community anchor, and it continues to be a community anchor, the community will support it. So, sort of in three buckets, the place, the school, the culture, and the community. And some of the sort of summary I might give you around what we heard is that we think that the Mercy-Westwood High School ought to be a west-side-serving high school, a high school with a community catchment area, that this is an aspirational school with potentially tested admission, that there ought to be a focus on professional development, exposure to lots of different career opportunities, that there ought to be a network with local public and private schools that come to the building, and that a principal and an LSD officer ought to be up and running quickly because we know you want to get this building up for next year. So, that's a quick summary. Maybe just real importantly, and there's more information on the process that we used in the document, we tried to identify everybody that we could with Westwood civic leaders' help that would be interested, and we wanted to talk to them or give them an opportunity to share. We worked with the neighborhood. We and you, I think, set clear expectations for the conversation. We had open, targeted community conversations. In other words, everything open to the public, but made sure that we were doing special invitations to those people that we knew really cared. We use something called appreciative inquiry, and there's more information about that in the document, but it's just a way to organize conversations so that people are talking about future-oriented, positive things as opposed to complaining. And it's important to communicate findings. So, that is, in summary, what we found, and I am happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom. Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Davis?
Hey, Liz, thank you. Did you hear conversation amongst the stakeholders in regard to the relationship between Westwood School and Western Hills High School?
There were conversations about, I think there were some folks who said, "What is it that we need on the west side? What is the new thing that we need? What is the new niche that we don't have?" And I think that was maybe partly about, "West High is one kind of school, Gamble is another kind of school, do we need something new and different?" But I didn't hear people say there's a competition amongst, right? I didn't really, clearly, people like this building, and there are all kinds of schools who would like to be in this building because it's a beautiful space. But I didn't hear people talk about a competition. I did hear several people, students included, talk about space shortages, and so, everybody would like a little more elbow room wherever they are.
I ask because it was, your report was heavy on culture and community, and every time you talked about, and I'm definitely not a west-side person, but the things you were saying were making me think about Western Hills High School, you know, community-centric, staple the neighborhood. And I went to school at a time when you went to school in your neighborhood. So, everything you were saying to me was sounding like Western Hills High School, and I didn't see how the Westwood School, from your report, would be different. I actually didn't see, I didn't hear different at all. I heard Western Hills High School, but more academic rigor. That's kind of what I heard.
I think that, I'm glad that you heard that because I think that's definitely what people talk about. People talk about the importance of being connected to community. Students at West High feel really close to their classmates, they're happy to be in that school. I think they all feel like they get a bad rap sometimes, but I think everybody realizes they would like a little more elbow room, so I think people see this as an add.
Thank you.
And different than West High. I'm going to say again, this business about professional development and internships and co-ops and broad exposure to career paths that maybe are different than people understand seems really important. And I don't know that that's different than West High, but it is clearly what people are describing about what they hope about this building.
Mr. Messer, followed by Mr. Morosky.
Thank you, Liz. That was a great summary. So, I have one comment and then kind of a question. I'll start with a question. Was there any talk about the outside-the-classroom learnings? You know, was there, they feel like they needed a football team, and did they need a drama department, and did they need some of these other type services, the learnings outside of the classroom that may require some creative thinking, given the campus, et cetera?
Certainly, yes. So, I'm going to do the obvious question first, I think, which is there's not a lot of room for athletic facilities, and so, there wasn't a lot of talk about that. People didn't feel, I don't think that felt like a constraint to people. I think that there was absolutely talk about arts and music and theater and career opportunities and having co-ops at west-side locations in the community. Those are the kind of things that students talked about and parents talked about. And I understand what you're asking, and it just didn't seem like a constraint. People didn't labor over it.
Great. And then, just a comment that, now putting on my strategic planning team hat, you know, yes, I absolutely think that we want to do what the neighborhood feels is appropriate, what they value, and all those types of things. And then, we also have to think about the things that the district needs. And I think one demographic that you didn't speak to, that I know I've talked to a couple people about, that I think would be interesting is, there's a number of students who travel from their west side every day to Walnut. Academic rigor, the whole bit. And I think that we all know that there is a significant population issue there in that school that is probably going to hit its limit before too long, the way this district is growing, and we need to look at ways to offload that. And I think it doesn't happen every day that you have opportunities to think through that strategically. So, I would be curious in a demographic of parents and students who have chosen to drive to the Walnut Hills campus every day and think through, what would the school have to look like for you to say, "I would stay in this neighborhood"? Not saying that it has to be a Walnut West, but what were the characteristics that said, "You know, I'm going to go all the way over there, but I live over here," and I know a few of those parents, and I'm sure there are many more than that, so that might be a follow-up.
So, I don't have a number for you because we didn't do that kind of a study, but there was definitely that conversation. And I think what you see when you see the description of what academics looks like and what the culture looks like, lots of the people who describe that are describing what they'd like to see in Westwood so that they didn't have to send their kids to Walnut. There was a snowy day at Gamble, and there was, as always, like, it was, you know, sort of hard to get there, and there was lots of stuff about getting to school on a snowy day, and there was some of that conversation among students. I think there was definitely an expression that people would like to stay in their community and get a quality education. Absolutely.
Mr. Morosky, followed by Ms. Bates.
Thank you so much, Liz. This was great, and it was awesome being with you at the West High with all the students and getting their input. And to echo Board Member Davis's point, one thing came across loud and clear, is those students really enjoyed being at West High. And so, I have a few questions, if it's all right. My first one is regarding the parents, the CPS parents, there were 35. Did they represent parents from all over the city or just in Westwood?
So, there were 35 people at the parent-centered conversation, but there were parents throughout all four of them. And I think largely, they were west-side parents. We asked the question specifically when we were at Centos, and everybody was from Westwood, but I think largely, they were west-side parents.
Well, Westwood certainly can fill a room. We have a few of them here, and they are absolutely engaged. One of our challenges, of course, in addition to what Mr. Messer pointed out, is that we have to make decisions based on the entire district, which is larger than the city. And so, depending what sort of facility this becomes, I don't know, I'll just put this out there now where my brain is tonight, is I don't know how possible it is to make it specific to a certain place because to Member Davis's point, we have good schools over there. Nobody has to send their kid across town. And I realize you're just delivering the message, but nobody has to do that. They choose to do that, which leads me to my second question with no offense meant to Board Member Dansby or Davis, who are both Eagles. But when I hear about the academic rigor in the Walnut of the West, and I respect that, and I think I know what it means, but I want to ask directly, what do you think it means? Because to me, and maybe I'm biased, but all of our schools are academically rigorous. Western Hills has AP classes. Gamble Montessori, who's in the house, Dater Montessori has, what, a third of the population takes the same test that it takes to get in Walnut Hills? So, I'm curious if you have any direct language on what that means.
So, I have, I've been thinking about this a lot because we've had, that was pervasive in the conversation. I think when people describe Walnut Hills and use it as an example, they're using it as a placeholder for academic rigor, which is not to say that other schools aren't, but it is, it's the shorthand in this district for what we mean by that. I also would say that, and having a Walnut Hills grad a couple of years out myself, I think that if I described what I think people mean when they say that, it also means I want a classic education, we're doing Latin, we're doing, that's what I mean when I talk about academic rigor, which is described at Walnut. I think that when people say academic rigor and they're describing what they look for in Westwood, it is different than that. It is this focus on professional development, it's this focus on technology and career readiness and broad experiences and life skills and supported education. It is, it's different. It is, they are not meaning the same thing. I think Walnut has become shorthand for something, but it isn't what people are describing when they talk about Westwood.
I appreciate that. And that, to me, sounds like Dater High School, but again, that's just, I'm just one person. And I think we have an opportunity with the Mercy Building to do all of these things. There's certainly enough space, there's a lot of green space around it, there's opportunities for partnerships, and I look forward to going through this whole thing, and I appreciate you coming to present tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Bates.
Yes, I mean, from what I'm hearing, there's an assumption, because this was a high school, that it's going to always be a high school. And back to the point of Mr. Morosky, we have to look at the needs of the entire district, and what we have on the west side are very, very crowded elementary schools, to the point that, you know, a charter school, this is probably no secret to the community, is looking to open up a building with a benefactor willing to put up a multimillion-dollar, state-of-the-art facility to help satisfy that need. Is there a reason why they only discussed high schools? Did they dismiss elementary? Did it not even enter their minds that this could be an elementary school? Because that's definitely the need that we have over in that part of town.
The focus of the conversation was definitely on high schools, and I think the tone, to some extent, was set in the Mercy alumni conversation, which was the first conversation, because that's their memory, and that's their history, and that's their tradition, and there were comments like, "That's the way the building was built." I mean, so that definitely set the tenor for the conversation. I'm not sure that anybody would say, I'm not sure, I heard anyone say, "Can't be an elementary school." I certainly heard people talk about it as a high school.
Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, thank you. And I like the lead on this where it's a historic opportunity, and it truly is. I mean, the symbolism of this for public school, particularly on the west side, is not lost on anyone, particularly, I believe, the only native westsider on the board, myself. This is huge. This is very huge. To everybody's point, we're going to have to have our administration tell us and remind us about both our needs district-wide, and also, we're going to have to have the administration the administration and the board work together to, and the strategic planning group and whoever, talk about what the growth plan is as we, as we go forward. But speaking of Mercy, tonight's not when we're gonna make a decision, and tonight's not our only opportunity to deliberate and discuss what it needs to be, because we want to do that in a very, very serious way. But from a portfolio of schools, it would seem that you do want to do something that is complementary to what we already have, and also fills the needs that we have particularly, well, district-wide, but particularly on the West Side. And to Ms. Bates's point, you know, we're not gonna open that school up in tomorrow, or in August, there's gonna be 9 through 12, or 7 through 12, population. It would seem to me there'll be a long transition to, to whatever the end is. And that campus is so fascinating in that it has a number of different buildings to it, where you could perhaps address the need for elementary initially, as well as start to build a high school, if that's indeed what we wanted to do. I think people think of it as a high school, because it is. And from a facility standpoint, the gym is a high school gym. I mean, it's, it's world-class, if you want to talk in terms of basketball and volleyball. Those will be major sports there, if that becomes a high school, because you're learning in place. You, you're going with the facility that you have. But I can see where we could take care of some of our problems initially, overcrowdedness, by saying it is a West Side draw. And I could see where we could take care of some of our issues of expanding preschool, because one of the deserts for preschool, at least in the, in the report we've heard before, is the West Side and the Westwood area. So you could do that in the transition. I, I don't know, now, now I'm gonna be, not, I'm watching the Eagles. The little Falcon over here is gonna say, "When people say that rigor stuff", I do think that we have to be careful, if that's not a buzzword or something weird. But I think it's an idea that they want a very academic program. But I also heard, in all the ones I went to, every single one that I went to, I, from the grownups, I heard service learning, and be involved with the community. It was very dominant. If I, and I think you point that out by referencing the community. So that was interesting to me, as a way to, to, to the community wanting to own the school, and, and the school being important to them. People wanting it to be part. I mean, there's, you know, it makes sense that if, there are things that we could do to make it an interesting place. But the Walnut of the West concept, that came up a lot, and there was even people that were in their 80s who had taken the streetcar from Westwood to go to Walnut Hills a thousand years ago. So there was a real sense that they've been doing this for a long time. But at least, I remember our discussions, and I don't mean to belabor this, but when we talked about Spencer, and when we've talked about other programs regarding our high schools, that was also supposed to be a way to start to address our, what we have a very crowded Walnut Hills, by offering the same kind of, not same kind, but rigorous efforts, but a different way to approach it. That it would be competition, as well as complementary, to a Walnut. Because the Walnut system, it's almost as though a particular kind of kid thinks that maybe they only do that if they don't do the Montessori. So, and when we did New Tech at Aiken, it was the idea of expanding the portfolio, and expanding the choices. So I think there's just a whole bunch to talk about, but I, I was very, I was very encouraged by the discussions. I was worried that there would be weird kind of things said, and they weren't, or that there would be just tremendous distrust of CPS, and there was not. It was, it, they were, I won't say worried, they were hoping, and being hopeful as they could about us. But I think the worst thing about everything is that we have to decide this fairly quickly. And, and the superintendent's gonna have to get us enough information, and our president's gonna have to give us enough opportunity to talk among ourselves. But I think we all have some certain hopes that we'd like to see there.
I, I would say, and just maybe for me to be done, I think it was, this has been painful for folks, and I think they really appreciate that you reached out, and that you, you took the time to connect, and I think people really appreciate that.
Ms. Copeland, Dansby?
Thank you so much for your work here. The information that you've brought back to us is particularly fascinating. I was going to point out that this is a great example of what happens when we, as a board in the district, ask the community what they want. It's their school. I think it's important to note, of the four areas that you put things in buckets, is the culture. And so for whatever reason, you know, the thought of Walnut being the flagship, which it is, in my mind, has to do more with culture. The folks who would have taken a streetcar across town to be a part of the culture. Your graduate, my graduate, my colleague, you know, it, it is driven by, there's a very distinct culture at Walnut Hills High School. And so I don't think the rigor is all of it. I think it is the culture.
Right, it's the image.
It's the image. It is. And it's a lot of great things. It's the friendships for life. It's the professional destination that lots of graduates reach. And so I get the, the point that folks want to attain to that, but I don't want us to just say, "We only have one image, and it's just Walnut, and we want to be like that."
I think that's exactly right, and I think Westwood would say that they had that picture as well, and it was Mercy.
Right, right. I do love the fact that folks are critically looking at careers and that for our students past graduation, and getting our kids ready in that way, from, in my mind, elementary to graduation and that. So for me, I would think that we, as a board, as a next step, would convene amongst ourselves, listen to our experts, and, and then figure out with, you know, the, the overcrowdedness, that's a major, major issue. And then I'm gonna really advocate for the culture that that part of the district wants. Now, that doesn't mean that someone from Evanston can't go to the West Side school. Is that right? I mean, you know, so the whole thing about, "We just need it to be a Walnut", I'd like to see us work through that more, so. But thank you for your work.
Yes, and one closing comment, and I won't repeat what other folks said, but I tried to attend almost all of them. I missed a couple. But I did hear from people, both in their groups and talking to us, and personally, the key thing that I heard was the oneness in the community, just like you mentioned about Mercy. Mercy belonged to that community, and that's, that's culture, and that's rigor, and that's all of that. And they want that. And one of the things that I talked about with people who approached me personally is, we want to be able to keep this an ongoing conversation, and we want to keep you informed. And I think, Liz, if you recall, I always said, whenever I had a chance to speak, "Everybody here will get something they want, and something they don't want." And that's where that balance is. And, and I did want to make a comment about, no, they didn't talk about elementary, but you didn't go in there with this preconceived notion that it wasn't gonna be an elementary. They formed those thoughts themselves. So that gives you an idea of where their thinking is. It is a high school. That's what they identify with. So they went in thinking it's gonna be a high school. And I also said to the groups, "The district has to look at where we are in terms of what we need for the district as well, and that balance, where is that balance?" So in saying that, I would say, on this, owning that place called Mercy, whatever West Side, or whatever we call it, is important to that community. And every comment was about, "This is important to us. We want our community to be maintained. We want this." I think that's very important stuff. So I thought the process was very well done, and very, I very much appreciated getting the feedback from the young people.
Yeah, they were great.
So thank you so much, again.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Superintendent, our next presentation?
Yes, we have a very short update for you. We were asked and given an assignment by the board to provide a presentation update to ESSA implementation, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act. And so we have members of the leadership team who will be providing you a very brief update of what this looks like in terms of implementation within Cincinnati Public Schools.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Superintendent Mitchell said, we were asked to present to the board an update regarding Every Student Succeeds Acts. For those, most of us know, Every Student Succeeds Act was initiated, it took the place of, in December of 2015, and it was a replacement of the No Child Left Behind Act. And what we'd like to do tonight is address the different issues that are in Every Student Succeeds Act, regarding to what the requests were. So basically, for Ohio, each child is challenged to discover and learn, prepare to fill a fulfilling post-high school path, and empowered to become a resilient, lifelong learner who contributes to society. Our goal tonight is not to read through every one of these, but one of the first strategies is highly effective teachers and leaders. And I think what's critically important, what the district is focused on, and the recruitment and the retention of those individuals. We have to recruit, and then also figure out how to retain those individuals. We've shared some of these details with you before, but just to highlight a couple, the CPS principal, assistant principal assessment centers that we do yearly to find the best administrative talent. The job fairs that we do yearly to find the best teachers, the best paraprofessionals, the best accountants, the best food service workers that we can for our district. And the most recently, which we will be transitioning to in February, challenging ourselves to think differently, moving from an exit interview strategy to a stay interview strategy. Why are individuals staying in our districts? And then this also just continues, again, some of the strategies that we have here that we are doing to focus in on our staff. So again, not to read all of them, but some that I'd just like to highlight on. The professional development that we do for our first, second, third-year principals, critically important to the work they do. We're partnership, partnering, partnering with the University of Washington, and we'll be doing monthly sessions with them as well, in its development for our principals. In addition, as we continue our focus on quality improvement, and quality improvement process, we have 19 principals and five assistant principals who will be going through the quality improvement principal leadership development, critically important for the work that we're doing, the strategic work that we're doing. And then lastly, development of school leaders for future recruitment through partnerships with the University, Miami University.
The next few strategies are around instruction and assessment. So Strategy Three is based on the support that we give our, our teachers, and having the ability and the platform to co-create programming and curriculum with them. So a great example of that is Vision 2020 at our elementary. For our high schools, we have Algebra I and ELA monthly collaboratives. As Paul mentioned, our quality improvement training. And we do an annual new teacher orientation, as we have hired roughly around 250 new teachers for the last three years, every year. For ESSA, they also have broken down the standards in four domains. The first one being foundational knowledge, which starts at the elementary, making sure that our kids have solid academic skills. CPS is the best when it comes to choice, and I've highlighted some examples here from our Vision 2020, our neighborhood programs, our Montessori programs. We have Spencer, who serves our gifted and exceptional students, and then our world language programs, like AME, LEAP, and Fairview. Through ESSA, they want to make sure that we have well-rounded curriculum. All of our elementary schools have PAM, which is Physical Education, Art, and Music. And at our high schools, we offer college and career pipelines at all of our high schools. Leadership reasoning is about engaging students, and through our GLINK project and peer collaborative, those opportunities are available for our students to participate and engage in community, problem-solving, and be involved at the school level as well. And then we have some programming for SEL, social-emotional learning. As far as assessments, we know, we took the stand that the AIR assessment in the EOC is not the end-all, be-all. That's the report card, and it's just one data point. Here at Cincinnati Public Schools, we offer a variety of ways that students can demonstrate their ability. One is through early literacy, and we use that information to help support early literacy skills. Of course, we do the state assessment, but this year, we administer three AIR readiness assessments, which is aligned to the state standard, so we can be proactive in our approach for those high-stakes exam. We also have diagnostic assessments, which is teacher observation, exit tickets, and using that information to guide instructional strategies. We have problem-based learning and college readiness, which is our ACT. This first bullet is around state accountability system, and this is their words, ODE, that they want a system that is fairer and more meaningful. Cincinnati Public School, I believe, has been a leader in equity in ensuring that all students have access to quality education. We measure students' performance in multiple ways, and we engage all stakeholders in today's earlier presentation around engaging our community in that they are a member of co-creating supports for our students.
Strategy Seven, meeting the needs of the whole child. And I'm not gonna read that to you, but what we're looking at is making sure that all of our children are, are met where they are. What we're trying to do is make sure that we provide professional development for our, for our students, for our teachers, to work with our students. We are also looking at to make sure that all of our students have access to the curriculum, which is very important. We want to expand the number of slide classrooms that we have. As our district is changing, as our district is growing, we are meeting the needs of all of our students. And to make sure that we are providing support for our ESL teachers as they move forward. We've divided it up into three buckets as we've moved forward. The first one is professional development. What are we doing for our teachers and our staff? Are we providing that training for our folks? What are we doing with restorative justice as we move forward? It's not about punishing. And then getting our teachers, our, our staff members' knowledge of what trauma-informed practices are. The second bucket is coaching and technical support. Are we provide, what are we providing? We've just started with social workers, and they are working very closely with our schools, and putting activities with them at, at the front line of things. We also have a great partnership, and it is a true partnership with Children's Hospital and Mind Peace, working with our students at the sites, at our school places, and moving forward. And then SEL, and I think I've heard just about every board member talk about that, social-emotional learning. And it doesn't, you don't wait until they get to high school. We're meeting them at an early age, and then some of the activities that we have with them are very game and toy-related. So our students are actively engaged in something because they're interested. We're using that as the hook, and then we're teaching them those skills through those. So at this time, we'll have Vera.
Strategy Eight is expand quality early learning opportunities. We are collaborating with the curriculum department, and also with the, it's not up here, but Safe and Culture Department, to look at kindergarten readiness as we are planning and developing professional development and other avenues to service our children and our families in the preschool area. We are providing community outreach through our three district-wide registration hubs. We have a multiple of funding streams, so we are able to service as many families as possible as we continue to expand. We've added the four classrooms, and in January, we'll be opening three more, which we had our first registration today, which was exciting. We continue to identify the desert locations within our district boundaries and high-quality preschools. We are working and providing support and coaching to our classroom teachers, so they are having high-quality programs within our buildings for our five-star ratings.
Literacy skills. Vera mentioned the importance of early literacy in preschool, and we have expanded those seeds, our work with quality improvement and data-informed decision-making. And we offer rich interventions and enrichment programs from tutoring, clubs, and after-school activity. And I also want to mention, we're doing an audit of our ELA textbook and resource material this year. And we're using the assessment called EQUIP, which is from the state. And basically, we're looking at two things. Is it aligned to standards, and is it inclusive? And then lastly, transforming our high schools. We, again, are the leaders of choice in students and family making the choice of what school program they would like to participate in. And we have college preparation programs, Montessori, Career Tech, and Virtual are all options. And then our three E, enroll to college, so we have Advanced Placement, College Credit Plus, and a variety of pipelines, UCIT and the Teacher Academy being a few examples. Enlisted, we are looking and researching partnerships to see if it's feasible to offer a junior ROTC program. And then employment, we have several career pipelines, including manufacturing, construction, logistics, and cybersecurity. So in conclusion, basically, with ESSA, it's definitely ensuring that all of our students have access to high-quality schools, and it starts with supporting our teachers and our principals, having parents and community be a part of the process. And then we're just here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Messer?
Thank you for that overview. Lots of strategies there. I probably could use a crash course on a few of those acronyms, so maybe we'll get together after on that AIR and a couple of those that, first time I saw those. But, you know, I have said this before, and I think this is another great place to plug this in. But on that first slide, looking at our teachers, and then the next one was the principals, we have a major workforce, one of the largest workforces in the region, and there was no mention of their engagement, measuring their engagement, and how do we drive engagement? Because we all have that potential to work more or give more specifically related to how engaged we are. So I think that sort of initiative is a critical piece to that. And one of the questions, if you use Q12, which is one of the most widely-used engagement surveys across businesses, and I, and it's used in multiple areas outside of business itself, but it's used with the majority of the Fortune 500 companies. The number-one question is, I know what's expected of me each day. And then number-two, I've received communication or evaluation of my performance in the last six months. And then the three is, I've had the opportunity to learn and grow in the past 12 months. So my point to that is, if we're measuring engagement, that's kind of an important piece. But also, what's the percentage of really high-quality annual performance planning and appraisals do we have across our, specifically, those teachers and principals you talked about? And are there touchpoints throughout the year to ensure they're continuing to up their game by having that support around? And I didn't see Performance Management or Annual Performance Appraisals on there, and I didn't see engagement specifically, but I do think they are huge magnifiers to everything else that was on the slides.
Other questions? Or did you want Mr. McDowell? Were you going to respond?
Sure, I can.
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, we totally agree with everything that was just stated. And our staff are evaluated on a regular basis. Principals are evaluated on a regular basis as well as long as our teachers, as well as our teachers. That's defined to us from Ohio Department of Education is how we evaluate, and when we evaluate, and how that works. But critically important, and I don't want to speak for any deputy superintendent or assistant superintendent, but I know, like, for example, when they're evaluating their principals, it's those touchpoints with the principals where they're there in the building, monitoring what they're doing, visiting the classrooms with the teachers, having the opportunity to have that dialogue to discuss with them, hey, this needs to be, this needs to be worked on, or you're doing well with this piece. When I talked about the stay interviews, great opportunity for us to figure out why folks are staying in the organization versus exiting the organization, but it's a great touchpoint. It's just an opportunity to have think tanks with different employee groups, and then bring those employee groups together to have those conversations, what's going well, and then providing feedback to them as well. So we agree. I think that's an area that we would definitely have opportunity to continue to grow and improve upon.
And as one word followed up.
Yes.
So, so I think you're right, that hands-on coaching. What, I think it's whether you're a teacher, whether you name the job, that one-on-one coaching based on what they've said as their goals and objectives and what's expected in the job. But then it is the formalized process of then the written follow-up, and here's what we saw, here's what we agreed to, and here's the two to three things you're going to work on. So are the, is that written follow-up something that's readily available, that anyone can kind of see someone's progress throughout the year?
Yes. Related to different employee groups, yes, there's an opportunity to provide the written feedback. And again, I'm not speaking for those that evaluate the principals, but there is the opportunity for the in-person, and then there's the required written document that then is shared with those individuals as well. Same with our teachers.
Thank you.
Of course.
Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, thank you very much. Just a couple of points of clarification for me. This is, this is the update on ESSA as such. How does that fit into the Ohio Strategic Plan that I know we have to live by as well? I mean, there's the ESSA, and then there's the Strategic Plan from Ohio.
Actually, these ten strategies are from, directly from the Ohio plan.
Okay. And that's good, because that's what we'll be held to, so that's reasonable. I just had, you know, a couple of questions. I think you dealt with the programs and instructions, and certainly the equitable access to effective state-certified educators, early childhood. Couple of other things that perhaps, and I was, I think we've kind of glossed over a little bit of the discipline piece. I appreciate that you at least mentioned it. But a lot of the ESSA and the Strategic Plan really is talking about all of us reevaluating the entire discipline efforts that are now twenty-some years old, and that is a huge part of the equity piece within the state plan. And I know we're working on that, and I know in student achievement, the union and the administration's been very good about the equitable access to staffing. Something we did not mention is that ESSA is very heavy on engaging families. And I know we're writing policy about engaging families regarding federal programs and community engagement, but it's a huge part of ESSA, and it's a huge part of the Ohio Strategic Plan. And maybe you could be able to speak to some of that, or I know you were focusing mostly on instruction and school improvement, but that's a huge part.
Absolutely. I think our partnership with children is providing a structure, a system. So when you talk about SEL, we are looking at a process. So we're doing a small test of change at five elementaries around PACs and PATs. And around, an example of that program is Parents on Point that we have at several of our schools, Rockdale, South Avondale, and a few others. And it's also in some community daycare centers. And that program is around parents coming together, working with a building facilitator around parenting skills and workshops, and hearing from the parents about what best works for their child. And it also evolved into a networking system. So that's some early engagement around how can you support the school, and how can we support you at home? We have a lot of good things in place, and we are revamping our LSDMC manual, which I think is the foundation of having a great representation of people from the community, teachers, council, and just overall staffing as a way to engage. And we're looking at that structure as well.
If I might, I appreciate that, and I think that's all part of the purpose of the LSDMC reboot and the review of the Community Learning Center piece and those kinds of partnerships. I would encourage to, to greater emphasis on making sure that we have parent organizations at every school, because we don't necessarily have that. I'm just, and you've all heard me say this before, I don't know that we can instruct our way out of wherever we are. We have to be looking at the giant things like parent involvement or attendance of students and those sorts of environmental climate, climate kind of feelings that really, I think, would make a huge difference. And in presenting the ESSA piece and the Strategic Plan, I would make sure that further on you would include in any presentation, not just for us, but anywhere, that a cornerstone of the ESSA piece is about parental and family involvement and community partnerships. And very frankly, the Ohio Strategic Plan, for all intents and purposes, as I think some of us know at the board level, if we could have written it, and kind of we did, it's really about what CPS is doing. So I'd really kind of herald that a bit as well. Thank you.
Ms. Copeland-Dansby?
Yeah, one of my questions was going to be about the parental involvement and support, because I didn't see that as a gleaming part. Knowing that there are things that are happening in the district, my suggestion would be to peel that out a little bit more and to really hone in on what we're doing for parents. I heard you mention dealing with trauma-informed practice and the social emotional learning piece. The work cannot be done without incorporating the family. And I think one of the most profound things I've heard Mr. Miles say was, you know, meeting our students where they are, and that involves their family. And so I would encourage us to, and I know the work is being done, but I would encourage us in the plan to speak more highly of it. And if we're not doing it, I would suggest that we, you know, find ways to do that. I'm also very pleased to hear the work with the professional development for teachers. And so having sat here now five years, really truly understanding that we have to equip our professionals with what they need in order to deal with our children in their seats today. And so I have seen the district come a long way with that and where you just presented today. The other thing is, when we talk about transforming high schools and all the great things that were listed there, are we, when we say high school, does that include sevens and eighth grade?
Yes.
Or middle school as well?
Yes, seven to twelve.
Yep, just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Other questions or comments before we close? Thank you so much for the presentation. I remember when the state was struggling with the concept of ESSA and that structure, and how crazy. You remember the meeting, Ms. Bolton, that we had out at CAA? It's come a long way, and I'm happy to see the strategic pieces of that and how we're following up with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your feedback, and we will go back and do something with parent involvement and staff engagement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, we need a motion. I need a motion for a 48-hour waiver to approve the resolution before us. Second?
Second.
Okay, Ms., I probably said that wrong. To present the resolution, we'll approve it after we have a discussion. Ms. Bates, would you please introduce the resolution?
We have to vote on it.
I'm sorry. That's a roll call, Ms. Wagner?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Murawski?
Aye.
President Jones? Aye. Thank you. Ms. Bates?
Yes, and I moved for adoption a resolution confirming district and partnership alignment.
So moving, or second?
Is there a second? Okay. Discussion. Ms. Bates?
Yes, I, actually, Ms. Bolton and I worked on this resolution, and it's kind of a long time coming, but really what makes it so imminent is that we recently found that one of our very significant partners, the YMCA, is entering into the charter school business and using techniques that we have. They're pretty much opening up a community learning center, which certainly they're welcome to do, you know, that's part of their mission. But charter schools aren't in alignment with our vision, mission, and strategic goals. And another part of that is, you know, the sensitivity of information that we share with our partners. We have to be very careful and concerned about the exchange of that information. So because of that imminent situation, Ms. Bolton and I worked on this resolution to bring forward tonight. This is not only concerning the Y, this is actually inclusive of all of our partnerships to ensure that the 600-plus partners that we have, which is wonderful, but we really, at this point in our work with community learning centers, need to get a handle on our partnerships to make sure that all of them are aligned with our mission and vision and strategic goals. So this would be a direction to the superintendent and the administration to begin that work, but more eminently to review what's going on with the YMCA, because that is the situation that emerged and made this situation that we need to address rather quickly.
Other questions, Ms. Bolton?
Just for a little context, I think at the last meeting, it was assigned to Finance to review the particular contracts with the Y. And I'm glad that the committee's going to be doing that. I do recall at the opening session, the state of the schools, whatever that superintendent addressed the community, I know that it was mentioned then, and I believe then, and later on, the need for all of us to review the partnerships that we have, not in a negative way or anything of the kind. And so I think it fits within what the superintendent was looking at from a standpoint of the review of partnerships and their value and effectiveness, and how they could be better, and we could work more or less or whatever together. I would say that it's so impossible to, we need to have a kind of an inventory of all those partnerships that we have. But more particularly, too, it's probably, a friend of mine today told me, well, how are you going to evaluate their performance? And right now, I'm not looking at the performance as much as I want to see the alignment to our vision and mission. That kind of thing can be expedited. If they're, if they're in alignment with our vision and our mission and those great goals, that's the first part of the review, I think, that needs to be conducted. And that can be more telling immediately than perhaps us finding ways to measure the effectiveness of each one in their performance, although that needs to be done too. But at least this, it's very important that our partnerships be aligned to our vision and mission, so that we're working together, not in opposition to one another.
Great. Ms. Copeland-Dansby?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions related to the language here. As we talk about defining, well, as we talk about partnerships, I'm looking for the definition of partnerships. Do we have a definition of what a partnership is? Like, what are we talking about? Are we talking about the Y? Or are we talking about contracts? Are we talking about people? I don't know what a partner is, the definition of partnership. Do we have a district definition of a partnership?
If I might, I think that's a great question. That's a good place to start.
Because we talk about 600 partnerships.
We tout 600 or 700 partnerships.
What is that?
Is that a district-wide partnership that we have? Is it a partnership at each school?
Right.
And who's actually deciding who the partners are at the sites? So it's a very critical question, and that's why I think you're right to ask that, because we may be, we may be using terminology that isn't, that lives, but may not even be that real. And it does have site implications as well as district implications. And I think that's why we do need to see an inventory. Yeah, it's the Y. It's any number of our children's. Children's is a partner. Children's Hospital is a partner in some areas. The Recreation Commission is a partner. So it's those big, but also all the way goes down. So I'd love to see an inventory of what we consider. Since we came up with a number, there must be a list.
Yeah, so that's one question. And then my other question is, as we use the word review, review how? Is there a model? Is there a metric? Or is this resolution going to, should we spell out what we mean by partner and what we mean by review? Are we asking for a review or an inventory? Like, what are the parameters around the language that's here? It seems, my suggestion is that we maybe be a little bit more specific about, because I'm a little bit confused.
Well, I can answer that as well as Ms. Bolton, but the review would be how the partners and their work align with our vision, are stated and voted upon, vision, mission, and strategic goals. That would be the initial review.
So I don't, I don't know that we're saying that here, is my question.
And I think the intent was to attach our vision, mission, and strategic goals to this resolution.
Oh, I see the three bullets.
Uh-huh.
It's there.
I think one way to clarify this as part of a review is to first do the inventory. We need to know who 600 people are, whether we contract with them, we have some formal or informal relationship with them. Our administration is better able than we are to kind of define, because they work with the folks. So if you could define for us, like, or not define, but create this inventory that says, what do they do and does this align with our vision and mission? It kind of has a simple, I don't think it's simple if we got 600, but it's simple enough that we can at least have a visual and we can see what that means. I do agree that we have to better define what that is, because everybody may not see themselves as a partner, they just work in the schools. I don't know. So, yes. And Superintendent, you were going to comment?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Morosky, I'll get you.
I wasn't finished. I wasn't quite finished.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not trying to give an assignment, like, a work assignment based on what's written here. I'm trying to clarify what's written here before, like, I'm not asking for an inventory, unless we want to say that here. Like, is this a resolution for an inventory? Or is this, like, I don't even know what partnership is, so maybe in the verbiage here, we can describe what that means. 600 partnerships active in our school. I don't know what that means. So I'm looking at my colleagues, not you, because we wrote it. Yeah, so I'm just asking for a little bit more clarification, and I understand this is a first reading?
No.
Whatever it means.
This is for a vote.
Yeah, so I'm not clear.
Mr. Messer, I'm sorry, Mr. Morosky, followed by Mr. Messer.
Thank you, President Jones. I don't know if this is helpful, it's probably not, but when I read this, the way I interpreted it, and I, this is just an effort to try to answer your question based on how I interpreted it. To me, a partnership over which we would have leverage, being the governing body of this district, would be a partnership, any partnership in which public money is leaving this body and going to them. I don't see, outside that, I understand, we obviously can have sway over all kinds of folks. I read this largely, as you all know, I've been pretty excited about our transportation partnerships and what those look like. So when I think of public money leaving here and going somewhere, that's where my brain went immediately. I don't know if that was what it intended, but I feel like some sort of audit, for lack of a better term, of these, where is the language, that we would oversee a review, part and parcel, that then would be a list, I would imagine. But that was just like my interpretation. I also wanted to note that I think this is probably a good idea at this point, and I think it was inspired by the YMCA, who, to the best of my knowledge, has four resource coordinators in our buildings. And I think we do need to have that conversation, particularly since they are using our model in their building, but that's how I read it. I don't know if that's helpful or if I'm off the mark, but.
Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I, you know, when I read through this was the first time I saw it, but instantly what I thought was a partnership is anybody that we work with at a district, and I think it's financial or otherwise.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
If we work with them in any way and their efforts go against the very mission, vision and mission of our institution, then that should cease to exist. And I think, you know, to me, I would assume that that's what we would do, that we would have already had set up, because definitely in business, I mean, you would never go out and partner with somebody who could take your secrets and sell against you, or take your secrets and reproduce a competitor, or take your secrets. So they kind of learn. So I think that's just good business to have that, and I see it's not just, I mean, the money piece is for sure. If I was a taxpayer, I'd be like, okay, wait a minute, you're supposed to be safeguarding these dollars that I'm handing you out of my property taxes. Don't be letting other people kind of whittle away at that. And then the other question was on your second point. What was the second one? You said the review, because they were the two things that I zoned in on too.
Well, I'm looking for the parameters around review. I'm just looking to flush the language out a little bit more. In defining partnerships, what are we talking about when we say review? And then I heard the word inventory.
Oh, so I know what it was. So I think there is a, I think there is getting us corrected, so it's the inventory of everything that exists, but from then on, we should have then the rules of engagement for anybody that we would enter into a partnership. So I think that inventory work and the audit probably is step one, because there's probably a whole lot. But then going forward, it's just we enter an agreement, it's just, oh, step number three, ensure that they don't compete with our vision and mission. Great. Check that off. Great, next item.
I, for me, I think I'm looking at it very simply. We hear all the time in presentations, wherever we go public, we hear, we have 600 partners. I just want to know, the inventory is, who are those 600 people we keep talking about? That's what I think. So an inventory, when I miss, when I say inventory, we want to know who they are, what is their relationship with us? Good example, Mindpiece. Mindpiece is a partner. We don't give them money necessarily. We give other things, probably space and all that, but we don't have like a formal contract with them, do we?
We have an MOU. Do we have an MOU?
Do we have, we have an MOU? I don't know. But that's what we need to find out. So it's those 600 partners that we continuously talk about. And the review is looking at that, and maybe we need to redefine what partnerships are. So I don't know that I'm prepared. I don't know that I can define what a partner is, but it's all those 600 people that we keep talking about. Mr. Morosky and Ms. Bolton?
So I'll begin where I ended last time. I think we do need, I think we need to do this. I think we need to have some kind of parameters for it. It means, for example, a partnership, maybe it's not just financial, maybe it's someone we have an MOU with, it could be an exchange of services or partnering in that sort of respect. I would just worry about not having any parameter, and I think it's probably 600 with parameters, because without parameters, and I probably shouldn't use this as an example, but it's the first one that comes to my head, so I'm going to do it. Prosecutor Joe Dieter comes in our schools and just does stuff. And, so I'm just saying, I could see where all these little ideological, I'll use myself as an example, it's only fair, I would have a problem with that, and I would want to talk about it, and it would be a pain in the butt. So I think there needs to be some parameter of an MOU, there's some kind of, maybe it's not financial, because I just think without parameters, I mean, the parents at the PRM market on Saturday were partners.
That's true.
That's all I'm saying, like, some kind of, and I agree, Ryan, it doesn't have, yeah, it doesn't need to be necessarily like our money going to them, but some sort of agreement, MOU otherwise. But I think it needs to happen, and I'm fine with this.
We have probably 100,000 kind of opinions about what that is. I'm suggesting that we have to do this as part of the review, we have to define what it is as the next step. We aren't going to be able to define it tonight. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I think the fact that we're having this discussion proves that we need to do this, and it's also an opportunity to review where we are, which is, I think, some of the things that have been mentioned. There is a lot of, there's a body of work talking about partnerships as it pertains to community learning centers and that history to a certain extent. I don't think it's only financial money coming in or money going out, it's also those folks that may use our spaces, and it's part of our, where we have MOUs about recreation centers or what have you. I think we can only come up with the definition of, and depend upon the administration to do that by looking at what the inventory is and creating that list of what we assume to be the partners. But I'm not worried too much now about the performance of each of those partners as much as the general alignment to what we value, which is clearly stated and has been voted on and publicly distributed, and they should be following what is the alignment to our vision, our mission, and our particular strategic goals. And so I think you're right to ask, what is a partnership? And I think we're right to see, have the administration figure out that list, that inventory, and then from that inventory, we'll probably find the parameters, and from that inventory, we know who to kind of match up to our aligned goals and strategy and vision.
So I guess my next question would be, do we need to state that here? I think we just need, I just need a little bit more clarification as to the intent, like, like, to me, to ask for an inventory as an assignment.
Well, that, yeah, I'm worried about, if we try to, if we try to do too much specificity here, I'd rather let the administration kind of figure out how to pursue it, but if the way we can make sure people are comfortable, you could say that they have the administration develop a plan of action to conduct this review.
I think the plan of action, and then, you know, whereas CPS has over 600 partnerships that do what? Active in our schools. I just don't know that this is a true statement, that there are 600 partnerships active in our schools. So that's the whole, that's the whole definition of the partnership. I hear what Mr. Morosky is saying, and Mr. Messer, whether it's money going in or going out, I just, I just need more clarification. I'm just not clear as to the intent and the difference in an assignment about an inventory versus some level of policy and oversight.
Well, I would suggest, I'm asking for suggestions on the wording of the resolution so that we can act on it. So, yes.
I would rather keep it general and let the administration provide us with the, you know, with the parameters.
I guess my question, I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm so sorry. I guess my question is, does the administration understand what the policy is gearing to do?
I believe that we do have an understanding. I will say that we probably will need some more clarification on the inventory. I can remember very vividly, last school year, we provided an inventory by school. I want to say to the student achievement committee, so if it's something other than that vast number of partners per school, then I'm not sure what we're talking about. So we need clarification on that.
So that would be, if it's already there, there's something to work with, that we can see, that we can see, that we can begin to ask questions and get feedback on. So there's, hold on, I'm sorry, Superintendent, go ahead.
Just one more, I apologize. The second thought is around the fact that under the elementary initiative, and I remember it because it was part of the work that I led with a team, we looked at all the partners for those 16 schools. We had each school identify goals that were in their school that aligned to the district's goals. And in order to be, quite honestly, in order to be a partner in that school, then the partner had to align to one of those goals and clearly create with the school an MOU saying what they were going to do aligned to the school goals and aligned to the district goals. So it would say school, it would say goals, academic, SEL, extracurricular, and you had to fit into one of those buckets, and then you identified how you were going to be able to meet those specific goals. In addition, we pulled together the leaders of all of those major organizations on a regular basis to say, here's what we're trying to accomplish with these 16 schools and how you need to support this work through the MOU. So we did actually look at the progress, and we measured our progress against the amount of money that was being spent or resources that were being spent by that organization. So I thought that might be helpful.
Mr. Davis, and then Mr. Morosky, and then we're going to have a vote.
I'm concerned with the wording as well. I'm concerned, I'm probably more concerned with the example than I am with the wording. So who judges alignment?
Right.
Because by this wording, I'm not certain that the YMCA would be out of alignment, because they do something that we don't like them doing, or we're going to have a big problem with all of our partners, because they're not going to just always do what we want them to do. And I'm not certain that they're outside of the vision, mission, or strategy, or strategic goals of CPS, because they're doing something we don't want them to do. I'm concerned with that. Like, who is the judge of alignment? Is it the district? Is it the board members? Is it the community? You have to help me with that before I could support this resolution.
Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I mean, I think just to the Y, and I'll put my finance committee chair hat on, I mean, that one thing that for sure flies in the face of us is the charter schools. And let's say that there were 50 charter schools tomorrow, there would be significant cuts at CPS, because we pay out significantly more money than we get as those students pass through. So I don't want to lay people off. I don't want to think about closing buildings. I want to think about the expansion and that type of thing. And I think if we're entering into a, or if we're in any sort of agreement with somebody who is throwing a competitor to pull students away, which is the financial dollars that I was elected to protect on behalf of those people who voted for me, to me, I think that that is just to the very thing that we do, which is provide high-quality public education that takes away from that.
Can I speak to that, Mr. Messer?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Jones. Can I speak to Ms. Jones? Ms. Messer, I'm 100% agreement with what you just said.
Absolutely.
But you just did not say anything about our vision, our mission, or our strategic goals. There again, concern with alignment. Now, we want to say, or, you know, our partners can't go out and start charter schools, let's put it in there, because I am 100% against what the YMCA is doing for a number of reasons, one of which, Melrose Y, is like, it's just close to my heart. And to lose a swimming pool just has me thinking of 5:30 a.m. conversations with Donald Spencer for months on end in that swim pool, and just, it absolutely destroys me inside. So I'll support anything that says, don't deal with somebody that's doing something against our district. So I'm really concentrating on the wording.
Can I, can I offer a suggestion so we can move forward? We have a meeting next week. Can the folks who developed the resolution work this through a little differently and maybe revise the language a little bit? Is that possible? And then bring it back for consideration on Monday? And I'm looking, Ms. Bates and Ms. Bolton?
I think, I think that's possible, but, and I hear a sense that we're not adverse to the review of the partnerships.
Definitely not.
So to me, that's, there's a consensus about the review of the partnerships. I would, I fear if we get too specific, if, I don't want it to be about the Y, that's why we didn't include it in the Y, because it's a bigger issue than that. I think the justification of mentioning the Y is that if you're supporting charter schools in this moment in time, you are doing something that is antagonistic and unacceptable to our district. But it may, it may, the Y may still be in alignment. We can, so I would agree with that. I just think this should be as broad and as generic as possible so that it's not looking like we're being mad at the Y. The superintendent mentioned the elementary initiative. That was eight years ago or more when that happened. The last two years, I think you've gathered many of our partners together in the cafeteria over there, and they all started to have that synergy together. So it's not like this is new, but what we're trying to do is formalize it and say it's about alignment. So we can rewrite it, but I get worried about doing that.
Yes, we can move this forward, but what we don't want is to have this huge assignment for administration to tackle. I do think we have to be very clear and very specific what it is we want to look at. It sounds like there's already something there. So Ms. Copeland-Dansby, and then Ms.
Well, you asked me, asked if the makers would.
Okay, but she had her hand up. But go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
You did.
Go ahead, Ms. Bates.
Again, I really think that we need to stay pretty general about this. We do not get specific in our policies or resolutions. We provide oversight and guidance. And for the comments that Superintendent Mitchell gave about the comparison to the work that was done with the initial 16 schools, I think Ms. Mitchell clearly understands what we want in a general sense, which is what the board does. So I think I'm, you know, I
So I, I, I think I'm, you know, I'm comfortable moving this forward. And if there's further guidance, this board can, can give that as she progresses with her work.
Okay. Do you have a, you have a question, comment?
Yeah, I, my, my thought was.
Excuse me, it's my turn. I'm sorry, but I saw two hands. I don't know who was first.
The, the, the only reason that I'm, I'm wanting to speak now is because it's in direct correlation with what Superintendent, Superintendent Mitchell discussed with a very clear process for listing and/or giving an inventory, how it aligns with the school building, how it aligns with the district, how it fits with particular categories. So to me, that sounds like an assignment. And it is not my job to do that. So if you've, if, if student achievement asks you for an inventory already and you've given it, if you have a process by which you and your team evaluate and assure alignment, I don't see why we're asking for anything different unless that's not working. So back to my point, if we're asking for something different, then I would like to see that flushed out here. I'm not opposed to either. I just need more clarification as it relates to a policy versus an assignment.
Okay, can I, guys, it's 8:17. Can we narrow, this is our last two comments and we're gonna take a vote. Mr. Messer.
So just, just to build here, I mean, I think, I do, I see this is kind of the umbrella. And then is there an assignment to policy? I don't know if that's the correct thing when we get to that. To then create the partnership policy that would specifically call that out?
I think that's what this will.
No, it's a resolution.
This would kind of set up the review and then, I think then there would be a, maybe policy committee then could come back with specifically like, here's, here's the requirements. And, you know, and I think just kind of playing back in my workspace, when there's a new partnership, all of our partners have to sign an agreement.
Yes.
And so maybe there's also then a partnership agreement that could come after the policy's done that falls under the kind of umbrella of, here's how we're gonna operate and then here's kind of how we tactically bring it to life.
That could be part of the process. Mr. Morosky, last comment, last comment.
So, last comment. So we already have a list of the partnerships, so we're asking to go through and do an audit of it. And I hate to put on my English teacher brain, but sometimes I think it is helpful for us. Another way that I read this that hasn't been spoken about, and I think this might even speak partially maybe to some of your concerns, or probably not all of them, and I think directly to Mr. Davis's concerns. This is asking verbatim for a review of the, and evaluation of the partnerships' plural possessive alignment, meaning, does the actual partnership benefit our students? We are not going through and auditing the why. We're not auditing Xavier University. We're auditing the, does the partnership, does the end result of what's impacting our kids or our buildings align? To me, that's fair and broad and specific enough because what, and I know this sounds nerdy, but when I first looked at it, I was like, oh, there's an error. It should be partnership, comma, S. But it's not, and that would be totally different. It is the actual, the, the phenomenon of that partnership. And as a result, so then like Mr. Davis points, is a good point, are the partnership that would result of having YMCA resource coordinators in a building would not align. And if that's what we're talking about, I think we should do, I'm prepared to vote.
I'm, I'm calling for a vote.
That's fine.
Ms. Wagner.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
Ms. President Jones?
Aye. Thank you. Okay. We finally made it to board matters. Tonight.
Does it still matter?
Tonight, we have a representative from Cincinnati Preschool Promise, Lauren Moore, who is going to share information with us about the teacher wage pilot. And we apologize that it took so long to get to you, but it happens sometimes.
Thank you for still giving me time. I was sitting there afraid, afraid of getting bumped. So I'm glad to be able to continue to do this. I think I've had the pleasure of meeting many of you, but those of you I haven't met, Lauren Moore, I'm the new program and policy manager with Preschool Promise. I've been on board since this fall, mainly working on the wage pilot that I'm gonna talk about today. So I'm going to be fairly brief, so there's some time for discussion. I'm gonna talk a little bit about our approach to the wage promise from a high level, talk a little bit about where we are now, and then back up and tell you a little bit about how we got to what we're proposing. So because our work is divided so distinctly between 0, 1, and 2 star providers and 3, 4, and 5 star providers, we have also developed pretty distinct approaches to how we want to work on the wage issues among these, these two groups of providers. So for the, the 0, 1, and 2 star providers, we feel pretty strongly that the best way to get these providers to where they need to be in terms of wages is to support them as they achieve a high, a high-quality rating, a 3, 4, or a 5 star. And with that, they'll have access to the tuition assistance funds as well as the program that we are proposing. And that, that is gonna be the most secure way to help them get there. To that end, in addition to the quality improvement supports that we currently provide, which I'll talk a little bit about, just to let you know where we are with those, we in the spring are gonna be working on developing some kind of pilot to try and figure out how we can augment those supports to get those providers further faster. At the 3, 4, and 5 star provider level, we actually are doing pretty well. So the mean wages, based on a September 2018 internal survey of, of lead teachers at our providers, the mean wages are actually above $15 an hour. So they're hovering right around $16, $18. However, as we were doing the research that went into building this project, we realized that in addition to wages, our providers are still facing a lot of issues around retention and recruitment. So that really informed the work that we put into this and the program that we developed. So we developed a program that we're calling the Teacher Promise Grants Pilot Program to help providers sustain high quality once they're already there. So backing up a little bit, just to make sure everybody knows where we are at the QI level for those 0, 1, and 2 star providers, because I know we've had some recent questions about that. We are currently providing a, a pretty extensive menu of things, from coaching and educational tools to equipment, professional development, courses, substitute teachers, so that our providers can actually make use of those courses, as well as other kinds of secessions and workshops for our providers. We currently have 62 providers in the QI program. More than half of those, so 38 of the 62 are family childcare providers and about half of those are located in our quality gap neighborhoods. And then I have a, a spending breakdown to date in our second fiscal year of where that money is going for those QI providers. So I'll give you a second just to look at that. All right. So at the tuition assistance level, those 3, 4, and 5 star providers, we currently have in the approved budget $500,000 set aside for a wage pilot. So we were working within that fund and within that budget line item when we were developing this, this program. And we've actually found that the program that I'll tell you about, we have sufficient funds in that $500,000 to actually cover every single one of our lead preschool teachers at the 3 and 4, 3, 4, and 5 star providers. So we're really excited about that. What we're proposing is a direct-to-teacher grants program that helps support that sustained quality and also helps focus on retention, recruitment, and lead teacher professional development. So it's two parts. The first part is, are we're calling Promise Grants. So these are wage supplements that are paid to teachers monthly. And then it's paired with a series of advancement bonuses to help incentivize teachers making various kinds of professional development and other educational achievements. So here's a little bit of information about this. So the Preschool Promise Board of Managers did see this at the end of October and did want to move forward with it. So we hope you're in agreement because we would be ready to roll this out at the beginning of the year. So just a little bit about how we got to this place with this particular program that we are presenting. We spent quite a bit of time evaluating a lot of different options and you all saw the same report that we did from CUCI. And there really are, the world of options is immense. So we wanted to focus on a program that might be good for teachers and good for children because at the end of the day, we're focused both, we're focused on quality. We wanted it to be feasible, to be scalable, and then to really make sure that we were addressing equity concerns that were coming from our stakeholders and that we have in the, in the preschool world. So this includes making sure that this is beneficial to our family childcare and single-site centers in addition to our multi-site centers and that we can make sure that it's equitably implemented, particularly looking at our, some of our quality gap neighborhoods versus our non-gap neighborhoods. And that our lowest-wage teachers can really benefit fully. The only other thing I'll add about this is that this program that we developed is modeled on a really successful program or a series of successful programs that are, are currently happening in five or six other states that have the same sort of wage supplements paired with advancement bonuses and have been incredibly successful for retention, recruitment, teacher satisfaction, and professional development. In terms of a timeline, we've had an incredible amount of stakeholder participation, dozens of meetings, dozens of people in, in the rooms to make sure that we were hearing all the voices that we could around the development of this project. I will call out just in particular because I know that CUCI did bring their report to you all just as they did to our board of managers. So I wanted to make sure you know that they, they brought their report to us and we definitely used those materials because there was a lot of really good research there that they did. And we used those materials and took what we could that we felt was within the scope of preschool promise. So focusing really on those preschool classrooms and built that into what we're proposing. And then I know that they're continuing to work on some of the other issues that are out of scope for us and we really look forward to seeing what they're able to do in that space because I think it's gonna take a lot of different actors to, to support our providers. All right, that's what I've got for you.
Thank you so much. Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Morosky.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, for many things, namely the brevity and directness of your presentation. That was awesome. I've read through this document a couple times and so I just have, after reading through it, my questions are now minimal. But I'd like to start with something that I find the most interesting and I, I commend you all for the work you put into this to make this happen and hopefully it can continue and we can continue to raise people's wages outside the context of, of our teachers, out in the community as well. One of the things that I, I appreciated was that you make note to call out they will participate in regular minimally burdensome evaluations. Now while that may not have jumped out at anybody else, it jumped out at me because I know how many other burdensome things and important things are going on through the day. So I found that of note. My questions, I think, are pretty simple. So the, the budget on page two, the approved in May 2018, 2018, 19 Cincinnati Preschool Promise budget, already approved this half a million dollars.
That's correct.
And that was approved by whom?
I believe it was approved by you.
Well, it came to us, but before that was the preschool part, then it came before us and then it was?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to call that out, but I appreciate that. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't crazy. Another question, and I should have dug around in this on my own probably, but I did not. With the Delaware, Florida, North Carolina, the wages?
Yes.
Is that for public preschools or are those for community preschools?
Those, every state does it a little bit differently. The amounts of money, who qualifies, many of them are for community providers.
Awesome. And I think that might be, actually no, there was one more. Kind of a wonky question for the advancement in the CPL piece and the teacher advancement bonuses?
Yeah.
The teachers submit documentation of their completed advancement to receive the bonus. To whom do they submit that documentation?
So we plan to route all of that paperwork through the, the data processing that we already have set up. So the same people who are receiving and processing the application, so that's Metrics IQ is currently doing that with us. And so it, because many of the documents look substantially similar, it, it makes a lot of sense for, for those to be processed through that same flow.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Bolton?
Thank you very much. See you again. I don't think anybody will be surprised.
I don't think anybody will be terribly surprised that I have a lot of reservations about this. I've been having reservations throughout all of this and I think most of the reservations by everybody in this partnership, the partnership that we have have ultimately helped. But my, my first positive thing about the pilot is that at least you seem to, and somebody has seemed to hear our concerns about the CUCI report, which really started to go well beyond what we told the voters the $15 million was gonna be spent on because it started to talk about spending a significant amount of money for childcare. This is not about childcare. This is about getting kids ready for kindergarten and about having families have choices. So I really appreciate that. From a political standpoint, I would rather you wait and answer a couple of these questions that you fortunately put in here, particularly about the $15 and the $16 and the people as lead classroom teachers are already making and the 70-some percent of them already. So the premise that this wages were low, they are low, but the $15 parity has already been addressed apparently in 75% of the schools in part because of the tuition assistance. My concern, as a person very familiar for 1,000 years with levies and renewals, is that this does not go far enough. It is not big enough. There will not be enough to boast from this proposal. And it's, it's two years long and it's gonna run right up into the levy, into the renewal. And it's, and it's starting to address a problem that isn't necessarily a problem on that parity for those folks, the lead teacher folks. And so my concern is the people that are really hurting and everybody, you know, is, is underpaid throughout education, but most particularly in early education. And it particularly falls to those private vendors that are taking care of our kids and, and, and getting them ready for kindergarten. Those assistance, besides the lead classroom teachers, are really not being addressed here. And I think that with, with Power Ohio and with a number of other things, if we waited and answered more of those questions, made this bigger and have more of an impact in a full year instead of this kind of slower, smaller, less impactful pilot, if we waited for several months and were able to kick it off for fiscal '20, which would be, you know, kick it off in June, we could really have something. Because these other folks that we talk about in this session, as well as the people in Denver and Dayton, they're not trying to increase the wages of these people. This is radical, what we're trying to do, and we have to do it right. And I think it's great that you've made this attempt and I, I guess everything's been voted on without us actually participating in that, which is also a problem, but that's a process problem. We could have a bigger, better program impacting more of our people in the private sector than what you're doing here. And I appreciate your caution because you're, you're having to deal with people like me and everybody else. But for me, the, this could be much bigger. Because that quote in, in your report says that, that Cincinnati Preschool Promise first year, the tuition assistance program has already been successful in raising lead preschool teacher wages at affiliated programs to 15 benchmark identified in the master contract or agreement. A September '18 survey gathered insight that 34 of 45 of the preschool providers were representing 103 of the 137. So we're trying to address a problem that may not have been the problem. The problem is the wider labor force within preschool. The problem is the wider labor force within preschool. And so my concern is that I would rather this, we answer some of those questions, be bigger in our thinking, and deal with more people than the lead teacher classroom folks, and start for fiscal '20. And that way, we could actually do something that would be radically significant. The other piece I have, I don't want to have anybody get paid for something they haven't been able to prove that they did. I have some concern about the Metrics or whoever the folks are doing all of that stuff, because that was an issue two years ago from the outside source. And the other piece is, I don't want us to, if those other dollars in other states were not voted on as public dollars, that's, those are irrelevant examples to me. This is the public purpose of these dollars, because it's not just when we have the renewal for preschool in, what, '21, or whenever that's going to be. We have a renewal this November. And even though it has nothing to do with preschool, I will guarantee you that to pass that renewal, you're going to have to be able to boast some significant things about preschool promise, because that's where the identity is with the voters. So I believe that we should wait. It should be bigger and more encompassing, and I don't want to do stuff until we've answered some of these questions. So, but I appreciate the work and what you have to deal with.
Other questions?
May I respond to that briefly?
Yes, please.
I think you raised some really good points, and I don't know if this sort of half-answer addresses the concern about not being big enough. One of the things that really excites me about this model is the ability to collect really good data as we go and evaluate after year one. And if it needs to be bigger, we will be collecting data about what is happening to assistant teachers, because it's a concern. It's definitely a huge concern of mine that it is a pool of teachers who have a lot of needs. So I think you raise a really good point there, and is something we'll be thinking about and can evaluate for and reassess as we go. Yeah. And I should also mention that the MetricsIQ process, I think, is the proposed process. The contract hasn't been approved or vetted by our board. That's a conversation that's still ongoing.
Ms. Bolton.
I would also think that the Workforce Development Council needs to be a full participant. And I do think that in this, in the pilot proposal, I think some things were a little mischaracterized as to what the purpose of the renewal was, because now we're talking about stabilizing a workforce, we're talking about recruiting a workforce. This, we can't go there to make it about necessarily a better business plan for private vendors, as much as we have to have more sites and seats and choices for children and families. And we have to get the wage parity where we need to have the wage parity, instead of helping with the business plan. But I'm sure I'm in a minority on this, but I just feel very strongly that this could be bigger and better, and I think we have to answer more questions before we start collecting data.
Yeah. I don't see hands for other questions, but there are a couple of points that I wanted to reiterate. One is, I do agree with Board Member Bolton about the Workforce Development Council being more involved. And we created that group for this kind of work, yet it doesn't feel, or I'm not seeing anywhere where their involvement was. And part of the problem with the process is, and we, you know, I've had some conversation with Shiloh about this, is that this board should have been involved in the beginning as you all were thinking about this, because as you can tell, the whole issue is about the tax levy. So what keeps coming to my head is the word sustainability. You know, reliance on the government dollars, sustainability, it's a wonderful, I'm not totally opposed to the project, but long-term sustainability, impact, as Ms. Bolton talked about, what does that mean? We don't know enough about that in the long term. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about impact. But sustainability, and then the process for me, is very important.
I agree.
Other questions? Mr. Masser.
Yeah, I mean, I think this just reiterates the need, you know, because I sat here kind of thinking, when I saw that process, I didn't see a lot of CPS kind of check-in, alignment meetings, and those types of things. And I think that's a critical, important thing to note, critically important thing to note, that we have, I guess in the past, there used to be maybe direct liaisons, kind of talking before things got too far down the court. And I think we need to revisit that, just to reiterate what our president just said. But I think that process is why I feel a little bit like, I think it's already, the horse is out of the barn on this one a little bit, so.
Thank you. Mr. Davis.
That process concern is not a matter of preschool promise. That process concern is a failure on the Cincinnati School Board. That process concern is our problem. We, I wasn't here then, but we appointed five members to go work for preschool promise.
Yes.
And then we failed to bring those five members back and consult with them. So now we get this. And I got tons of questions for you, Lauren. I appreciate the text the other day. You did address a couple of things that I asked you via text. But it's like, why? Why even, I mean, is there any flexibility to slowing the pilot down, to get in our input and then come back? I hear Ms. Bolton loud and clear saying, I think we should wait. I think we should wait. Well, is there flexibility? I mean, I know you don't have that authority, but can you take that back? Or I'm surely, I'm comfortable taking that to Father Graham or whoever, if we're not satisfied with something. And I recognize, we have some, we obviously have some complicity in the failure of the process. I recognize that. I'll take that bullet. But so what? We still are the Cincinnati School Board and have some serious concerns, at least, I'm 100% with you, Ms. Bolton, at least two of us, three of us, four of us, have commented to some serious concerns with the pilot. Is there flexibility that we can now, before we really get started with it, add to it, and maybe make it bigger and better? I mean, we don't talk enough about zero, one, and two stars. You know, that's like a problem for me. And I know you guys got like four and a half million dollars in reserves, so I hear a lot about capacity, but I don't know. I mean, maybe I have to get Ms. Wagner over the holidays and help me understand how four and a half million dollars is in reserve of public money. I just, I don't even know how that's even possible. That doesn't seem like the state would even allow something like that. And we're talking about a levy in two years, and it's four and a half million dollars in reserve? I wasn't even going to start talking about this. Ms. Jones, I really want to talk about the process and how, if there is no flexibility, how Ms. Brooks can help us fasten up to get with our five board members. I know we spoke last board meeting.
We've talked a number of times about how we work with that. And so Ms. Brooks is on board with that. The board needs to have some conversation about what that process would look like, but then we need to put it to action as well. And it does, I wouldn't, I hear you saying it's our responsibility, and it is, but we have a structural relationship with them that's unique, and so we share that. And so, you know, I'm saying that to support what you say, but it takes both entities to work. Ms. Bolton, and then...
My name's here.
I'm not, I was looking beyond you. Thank you. Okay.
I just, I feel very strongly about waiting and reviewing this. I don't see the rush, because it's not, we're not making a big enough jump, or having a broad enough goal, or high enough goal, that has to be started. And it's my understanding you want to start in January, and this is our first real discussion about it. But, and that's procedural, but my feeling is if we could wait and have a little bit more of an opportunity to suggest some ways that this could be improved and made bigger, and the time that you might lose would be made up for the impact that you would gain. That's so critical, since we're going to the voters this November, and in a couple of Novembers about this specific thing. And to remember Davis's point, the zeros and the ones, those folks have to, we have to see a proposal that really allows them to have the professional development that they need to move ahead. So there's, I just, I wish that we could communicate to y'all that we would like a little bit slowed down and have some of these questions answered, because there's been some success, and maybe there isn't the one problem that we were focusing on, but there are broader, bigger problems for greater number of folks that are providers. And I just think it'd be great for a month or two to be able to sit together and figure out how to spend that money now on a bigger program.
Erica Copeland Dansby.
We should probably concentrate more on our work here than selling this. I almost lost my train of thought. I'm in support with my board colleagues here. I'm really disappointed that our five board members haven't, we haven't figured out how to have them be more involved and bring information back to us. I think we've lost a good year in doing that, and that's unfortunate. So I don't know what the parameters are for slowing something down or what have you, but I have to echo what these folks are saying in that we need more time and greater impact and input. And I will make an assignment at the end of this meeting to convene the five people. I don't know how we do that, but somewhere along the way, we need to give some direction and to hear back. I also think we've done the community a disservice by not communicating what's in the coffers that hasn't been spent, and a reallocation, and/or at least a variance analysis related to that. I full well supported this from the beginning, and still do. I just think we need to realign. And then also, how does the Workforce Development Council get involved and put its arms around some of this, so that we have better flexibility? And that's not directed to you. That's our responsibility.
There you go. I think it would be, it would be good to mention, Shiloh did intend to be here tonight. She had other reasons she wasn't able to be here. I believe she is planning to be here and speak with you in January, after the first of the new year. So I will absolutely communicate all of these concerns with her and make sure that she's prepared to address them when you see her right after the new year.
Thank you. Couple of last comments. Mr. Morosky.
Just a few things. One is, I don't necessarily share the impression that, at least I, have been out of the loop. Miss Tane Regret reports to us the student achievement. I stay pretty much on top of the workforce development stuff. I think they should maybe have, maybe there's more consistent touchpoints. I do think it's a two-way street. I do think our relationship can be shorn up. I'm not shy about that. But I, just for one, I feel like our liaisons have done an okay job. I think everyone can do better. But I don't think they've totally dropped the ball, and I think it's unfair to put that on them. Maybe it's more fair to put it on us. Second, I do think this can be bigger, and the common question throughout is, how will this be sustained? How will this be sustained? I was under the impression it was a pilot, and as a pilot stands, I think it's okay. That being said, I do think it could be bigger. If that can happen with a month's time or something, that's fine. I'd be interested to know what that looks like. And then lastly, and I think this speaks to the tax levy piece and to Mr. Davis's point about the zero, one, and two stars. One of the most interesting, actually, the only time I wrote the word "interesting" on this, no offense, the whole thing is interesting, but the part I found the most interesting was on the second-to-last page about the quality gap neighborhoods, in that there does not appear to be a correlation between neighborhood and wage level, nor between quality gap and non-quality gap areas. That being said, and this is what I think speaks to Board Member Davis's, and also what I think speaks to our advantage when it does come to levies, because if this buzz, if this buzz phrase holds true, it will be key to the passage in '21, but also in '19 and '20 of our tax levies, which is, it's a function of preschool quality rating, meaning that the wage gap, of course, and the quality rating are part and parcel of one another. So if we can do it bigger, and if we can reach it to zero, one, and two, I'm in. But I did just want to say, not on behalf of, I don't speak for anybody, but from our friends on the workforce development, I didn't feel quite as out of the loop, maybe because I talked them, I don't know, but whatever. Either way, if we can make it bigger, great, and I appreciate the effort.
Did you have a comment, Mr. Masser? Okay. One last comment? Mr. Davis?
I just want to respond, I just want to respond to Mr. Morosky, so he understands that, first of all, when it comes to preschool promise, I'm never out of the loop. I serve as the chairperson for Cincinnati Promise Forward. I get way too much information about preschool promise. And I wasn't even talking about the Workforce Development Council. I was talking about our five members of the Preschool Promise Board, which we don't have a current process, and we have to get a current process, because we are responsible. At the end of the day, this is the only body, not the business, not the business community, which had five, not Cincinnati Promise Four, which had five members. This is the only body responsible for that money. So it's not the Workforce Development Council. They meet in 1A often. I mean, they meet next week. When we meet here, they'll be down the hall. They're very, it's not Verus. I mean, she's very great. Those are not the people I'm talking about. And I don't even have a problem with our five board members. I don't. I know, I can't name them, but, and that's the issue. Can you name them, Mr. Morosky?
I can name a few of them, yes.
All right. Few out of five, anyway, Mr. Morosky, I appreciate you.
Three out of five or so, yeah.
Is, you done?
Yes, yes, Ms. Jones, I'm done.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Ms. Moore, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
And a lot of feedback here, which is what you guys ask for, so we look forward to hearing more from Shiloh on it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay. So the next conversation, Ms. Bolton, would you like to introduce this particular agenda item, please?
It was actually me.
She said she was...
Crossing guards.
Okay.
Just introduce it. And I know that Member Bates wants to speak of this, too. We suggested this topic. I think all of us are concerned about it. I know Mr. Morosky has been focused on it as well. And the issue is that we did say to the City of Cincinnati that we were not going to pay or didn't want to have to pay beginning in January for the crossing guards. They are city employees, and they have the jurisdiction, but we are paying for them. And of course, neither the city nor the district are going to let their children not have crossing guards. But it's just one more example of a lack of partnership between us and the city. And it goes back to, I think, us requesting, me requesting a list of all the people for whom we pay their salary and wages that are not our employees. And I ask another question as to whether or not there was a crossing guard at Central Parkway today.
Ms. Bates, sorry.
And also, I mean, we wanted to have this, or I specifically asked that this be discussed in open session, very publicly, with some background from our COO on the situation. But this is another example of a written agreement that the district had with the city, that the city is now saying, oh, but this, we don't have to comply with the written agreement. This goes back to the 1999 agreement. This is a public safety issue. We definitely need crossing guards, but it's even a bigger issue than that, because even since the 1999 agreement, the traffic control in the city has been atrocious. And we're not the only ones saying that. I mean, we have, we had a child hit today, Clark Montessori child, what was it, last year, West High Children. So this is even a bigger issue than crossing guards at elementary schools. This is maintaining control of traffic around our schools, so that our children can come and go safely. And this is an issue that is clearly falls into the city's purview. And in addition to that, we have an agreement that they were to take care of this for us, and... and a recent decision by a solicitor in the city saying that that written agreement is not really valid.
Mr. Adams.
Good evening.
There we go. Is that better? Okay. I don't really have a presentation, because you already, already have all the information. General Counsel sent you a letter back in June, explained the situation. Clearly, you're familiar with the 1999 agreement, that the city basically just said, we're not going to pay it, we're not going to honor that. And then in 2008, somehow we came up with a new agreement on this specific subject to say, okay, well, we'll pay for it. That runs out in December. So the only thing that is critical is that I do believe, and I think we all agree, that we need crossing guards when we come back from school after the winter break. And so in the letter that the city manager came back to us, basically saying, you know, they don't really, in my opinion, don't care about their employees, because they said, if we do not hear otherwise from CPS, however, we will let the crossing guards know that the contract for the provision of these services between the city and CPS has not been renewed and expires on December 31, 2018. So just very candidly said, we'll just throw them under the bus, and we don't care about our employees. So that's a sad situation, and it seems like we care more about the crossing guards than the city does about their own employees. So I would say that we, as of December 31st, my understanding is that we no longer have an agreement. And so I would ask the board to probably answer them, because there's no telling what they do. They look like they're anxious to say, yeah, this is, we'll just cut this out, to reach out to them and say, let's just have a handshake agreement, and we'll continue status quo until y'all come to a new agreement, that's a more formal agreement, based on the tax levy discussions and things like that, of what we're going to do with this situation. That would be my recommendation, because we need crossing guards, and they, the city shows that they do not care, in my opinion.
Mr. Morowski.
Thank you, President Jones. Thank you, Scott. I appreciate it, and I appreciate you going to bat for us time and time again. I would add to what you said about, seems that we care more about their employees than they do. I would take it one step further and say, to me, it sounds like, at least the author of that letter, we care more about kids than they do. We had a student die from crossing a street that is built to be a highway. We had a student hit this morning. That was insult to injury, because they failed to put a crossing guard when they moved our kids over to CET and told us they had our back. They reneged on that, too. It took them months to put a 10-cent reflector sign on Ferguson that I asked shortly after I got sworn in. It was like my first act. I felt very important. It took months for them to do it. A student got hit on Ferguson, and then they eventually did it, three months later. This is absurd, and I would add to it, not to complicate this conversation. Board Member Bolton knows that I harp on this in student achievement, and as does Mr. Davis. This is the same situation that we have with our school nurses, to the point that not even all our schools have nurses. We have to pick and choose what schools have the luxury of having a nurse, and when we have a nurse from Cincinnati Health Department, the key word being Cincinnati Health Department, we pay them. And I think, if anyone can get anything out of this conversation, it's that they need to know that we are paying the city's employees to protect our children. I'm sick of it. I also understand that we live in a, a world where our kids' safety are more important than any kind of disenchantment I may feel toward the city, because we have to pay these people. We have to have crossing guards, and the city's not going to pay them. And I like your recommendation, Mr. Adams. We need to figure this out, though. We need to be pretty firm about the new 1999 agreement, because the problem with the old one, that none of us signed, it stipulated there was no legal recourse for us, and there's not. So we, we really, we either pay our crossing guards or not. They've made it clear, but we need, I, we need to figure out a plan going forward, because this is not tenable, it's not responsible, and it's not ethical on their part.
Ms. Bolton.
The best thing that can happen to this district, frankly, is the, the, the ending of the 1999 agreement. I look forward to that end. I look forward to not having to pay any attention to that at all. It will make more money for us without that, from a standpoint of revenue, plus this very hypocritical piece about the nurses and the crossing guards, and knowing that the only, the three people, the three groups, resource officers and crossing guards and nurses, the city, the only one they want to keep paying are the police officers. They don't care about the health, and they don't care about the safety of our children. But they'll pay for the police, thank God, because we need those folks just as much. But it does say something about their priorities. And my point is, I'm waiting for General Counsel to still tell us the jurisdictional issues about a crossing guard out in the street, because it's been my understanding from the police department that, and other people, that we're not allowed to be doing, directing of traffic, and so it complicates the issue of the crossing guards of being in our employment, and I think that was part of the reasoning. But I feel very strongly that if we're going to pay for the crossing guards, they need to be our employees, period, over and done with, because again, when they made us have this parking arrangement, because the city council won't stand up to 3CDC, and they are the ones to whom they report, when they did that, they made us start walking across the highway, and look what they did in the assignment of crossing guards. They did not assign a crossing guard to those students and that staff. So again, it's a problem, and, and so I would hope that we would, if we have to hear about jurisdiction, and if we have to send another letter before the, the end date, they know we're going to blink, but let it be known that they don't, and they're not going to, and let it be known that they better put it in their budget, as they discuss the budget hearings in these next couple of months. And if they don't, we better have all those employees, and we better have the school nurses, too. We're going to be taking a whole, full complement of employees away from the city.
I was going to make that recommendation, that if we decide that we're going to continue to pay for them, they should report to us.
Yeah.
Because right now, we pay for a full-time supervisor of that, and I've just learned that the police department has come and pulled that person out of the area and working completely in a different area, and still, oh, yeah, I'm watching the security, or crossing guards. So it's just neglect all the way around. Yes, yes.
Lots of issues. Yes. Mr. Moore.
Just to respond to Board Member Bolton, there's no law that we've been able to see that says that crossing guards must be employed by the city or must be employed by the school district. The Ohio Municipal Uniform Traffic Control Device Manual of 2005, Section 7E, suggests, suggests that it is best practice for local, quote, "local law enforcement should be responsible for selection, training, and supervision of adult crossing guards." So it, it suggests that best practice is for them to be a part of the police department, I think, but there's no law that says that. The city's got own ordinances suggest, this is City Ordinance 418 dash 2001, that the city manager has the authority to appoint as school crossing guards persons to protect children going to and from school during such hours as the city manager may designate. So it, it's, it's a, we, we are aware of school districts in Ohio where the city is wholly responsible for school crossing guards and pays and manages and supervises. We're also aware of school districts in Ohio that, that do pay for them, so it's, it's kind of a wash, but we're not aware of any law that would prevent us from hiring and controlling the school crossing guards.
Ms., Ms. Bates, and then Ms. Bolton.
My, my concern with taking the crossing guard function in-house is liability, because of the out-of-control traffic situation in this city. And after Mr. Hoynes's citation of, of, of law and ordinance, I think that, I mean, I would support at least the rest of the school year continuing with the system that we have, working on another system, but also in light of the three accidents that have happened, the one today, the one in front of Ferguson, the one on Erie Avenue, that we demand that we have detail around our high schools when the, the children are coming and going to school, because three accidents are too many, and we're just lucky we have not had a fatality.
Yes.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say the same thing regarding the liability is an issue for me, but also, I feel strongly that, again, we should not be paying for other people to supervise the folks responsible for our children's safety. And I would prefer to have our people decide where these crossing guards are and the best use of the crossing guards, than having somebody that doesn't even circulate in the same vicinity and, and sees this as some minor responsibility, because it is getting increasingly unsafe. And I think it's time for another letter to city council and the mayor about the fact that we believe that they are not, they're not, that they are shirking their responsibility. And I mean, just put it to that. Forget about who's paying for what. They are shirking their responsibility to our students and our families and staff.
Mr. Messer.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, that I think it's time to, because was it the acting city manager, who is now the city manager, who wrote that letter? I mean, I think that our, the rest of our elected officials that are at city hall need to have this background, and I, my guess is, they didn't share that response, or I think there would have been a, hold up, that's awfully cold, that's not how we want to be represented. So I think we, we should put a formal response, not maybe just to that individual, but to all of our elected officials at city hall, and ask for some solutions. And I think using today as, we've had enough, we've had one more student injured, it's unbelievable that this is happening, and I, I totally get Board Member Bates's comment that it's not just us saying that. I hear that everywhere I go. Speedings off the charts.
It is.
It, it, you about, take your life into your hands lots of different places. I've heard lots of talk on pedestrian safety and all these things, but I haven't really seen anything meaningful. Well, there's no more meaningful place to start than with our children. And so I, I think that it's time to, you know, have a public conversation with our peers at city hall and ask for them to provide us some solutions, given the fact that police, all of that falls within their jurisdiction, citing that this is the best practice, and oh, by the way, the 99 agreement says this, and, and ask for a, a more complete and informal response from the entire body.
Other questions or comments? So, Ms. Bates, you're going to say something?
I think you're going to say the same thing.
Go ahead.
You go ahead. I was going to say, we, we can make the assignment now, or make it at, at the time of assignment, whatever your preferences, President Jones.
I think we, what I'm hearing is an assignment that's been stated. One is to generate a letter. I would suggest a pretty strong letter that states our position, send it to our, our council members and ask for solutions, and we need to, we need to have something a little more proactive, so that, you know, if this December 31st is looming around us. But in the meantime, I still think we have to have our school crossing guard, so I'm hearing that we need to continue to pay for that. So, you know, again, December 31st, though, what happens after that? But I think that, you know, this is the time for us to be proactive in terms of pushing the agenda a little more, doing whatever we have to do, and, and so I'm, I'm game for that. So that's an assignment, to write a letter to city council and city managers and, and the mayor, and I'm looking at Daniel Hoynes. Thank you.
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
And that we make this letter public, because I believe that we will have the community's support. That's what people in Northside are asking for, that's what people in Avondale are asking for, that people all over the city are asking for increased enforcement of traffic laws. So I think if we make this very public, we would get a lot of support.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else around that subject? Thanks. Okay. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I have a very quick report. It'll be super fast. Always want to highlight our kids, though. Just want to highlight the cultural exchange program, Spark Leadership and New Friendship. This is Withrow High School, and AWL students concluded a three-part cultural exchange. It's very exciting. I will say that these students are some of the most thoughtful students. Last year, I had an opportunity to go to Withrow to speak with a student who invited me out. He is from the Congo, and he wanted to know how Cincinnati Public could get engaged with helping his relatives, who are still living in the Congo, who don't have access to the education that he does. We were able to link him with an engineer at GE who is from the Congo. Brought him in, and they met with, along with the young man's father, and have been working since then to be able to provide help for his country. So it's very exciting, very thoughtful kids. Second thing I'd like to highlight is a first-grade teacher was surprised with a scholarship announcement, Abigail Weitzer. First-grade teacher at Fairview German has been awarded a $205, $2,500 scholarship. I was going to say $250,000 scholarship. She was going to say, woo-hoo. From Western Governors University, that she's going to use towards her master's program. And then the last student thing I'd like to highlight is the diversity of Aiken Cross County team celebrated. Not only do we have students who are from the United States, but also from Syria, Senegal, and Nepal. So very exciting. The very last thing, yeah, congratulations to them. Last thing I'd like to highlight, which doesn't involve our kids, but shows the interest of the community and our students, we had some participants from the Leadership Cincinnati Class 42, who were in our audience a little bit earlier, I think they have gone, except for our esteemed Lauren Worley, who is also a member of that class, but they came to sit in to observe leadership in action with our school board. So thank you.
Okay. Do, do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Bolton?
I have one thing to the one I was saying, just going to share with the superintendent Friday, on page nine, of moving the general leadership partnership to permanent condition. I just, my brothers will be that, that they wait on that until we've completed the review out of the partnerships, that's the review of community learning centers, and that we get a better understanding of.
What all that really entails. So I don't, I'm not suggesting that it be pulled, but I'm going to vote no, and it's no reflection at all on the person. It's a reflection on, I just don't think we're ready to make that commitment yet until we finish the CLC review.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call and roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye, accept on D, first item.
Ms. Copeland Dansby?
A resounding aye.
Mr. Davis?
I accept D, first item.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morowski? President Jones? Aye. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Davis?
I have a question on the revised. There's a grant in here from Accelerate Great Schools. Can you tell me what that's about?
It's at the.
It's on page 13.
Yes. So I didn't want to interrupt the really great conversation that was taking place earlier when the S of presentation was being made, but to Board Member Messer's point, we are doing extended. we are doing extensive work around talent engagement. So, we have, our strategy has a three-pronged approach. The first is around recruitment, which we heard, um, our director for HR talk about a lot. The second one is around, um, development. So, how do we develop our people once we get here? The third thing is around connecting, which is all about engagement. And so, as we're doing that work focusing on recruitment, developing, and connecting people to the organization, we did apply for a grant through Accelerate Great Schools around talent development, and this is that grant.
I appreciate that. Now, would that make them a partner?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm glad I voted no.
We have 601 now.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Copeland-Dansby?
I have a question related to the RFP that was awarded, related to the HR Wage and Compensation Study. And, um, my question has to do with the parameters of the compensation study. Like, what, what, what work are they doing? And does that include anything related to our diversity in our hiring?
The RFP is focused on salary schedules. Um, I believe that we have shared over the last couple of years, you know, particularly relating to recruiting, um, that we have had some struggles. We've lost out on candidates in offering employment, um, based off a salary, based off of the package that we could offer. Um, so, we, um, shared that with the board. The solution was an RFP for an outside company to come in and review all of our salary schedules, um, related to, um, any type of position within the organization. Um, we believe it's critically important that we are very competitive. Um, I think that goes along with a lot of the, what's been discussed this evening. So, that's kind of the parameters. Uh, we're looking forward to starting that work in January.
That sounds great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Bolton?
Oh, yes, I have, I have several, unfortunately. Uh, the, on page three, the All-Pro parking. How does that impact? Is that regarding, uh, the spaces that are in dispute? Does it recognize that we're doing, we're agreeing with anybody at 3C DC, which I don't want to do? What, what parking spaces are those?
So, I would ask Scott Adams to come forward to be able to address that.
I have to apologize. I do not know what this is about, but I will get you the answer first thing in the morning. Um, I don't know why, that, is it, did this initiate from the school? Because it didn't initiate for me. Uh, we have an agreement with the city, uh, to pay at CET, the parking. That's all I've arranged. And then, I don't know, All-Pro is?
Yeah, that was my question. That's not, that parking garage is not All-Pro?
No, I don't, I don't think-
What about across the street? Yeah.
Is that part of Turner?
Oh.
Is it, it, All-Pro is where the, uh, across the street from SCPA, the old Y? Is that All-Pro?
No, it's across Central. It's across Central.
Okay.
The other way, Central.
It's the Turner? Is it Turner?
I can't recall, but I, they did mention something about this to me, and, and, uh, and I don't know why they wanted to agree with that. I said, "Because they're actually paying higher than what we're paying for that." And I said, "Why would you do that?" And I think they'd already done it at that time. So, uh, let me find out more details about-
Thank you, and let us know, please.
I can do that.
Okay.
If it pleases the board, we can remove it and bring it back next Monday.
Thank you. Okay.
I have some more.
Yes?
Um, I have a question throughout on, uh, it starts on page four, but I think it appears in three different places. But the bigger place is at the end, um, on page 10. And again, I say, I am tired of paying for Hamilton County coaches in the millions without seeing the results of what it is that they're accomplishing. We are spending millions with Hamilton County, and I know that there was a reason politically to do so several years ago. And, and I'm sure they're doing a fine job, but I, just as soon have site mentors. I just as soon have other forms. But I would just like us to kind of put it in the list of reconsideration when we get ready for a budget. Because it's millions.
In terms of, um, the priorities as identified by the administration, we could not agree with you more. Um, there is a conversation that will be taking place by the end of this week with Hamilton County. Our intent is to put more people in our schools who directly work with our students so that we can measure the impact. So, we are in total alignment with you, but we do need to get through this school year.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay.
Then also, that UTS one on page five, that's a transportation, uh, amount. And that goes until the end of this year, correct? It's to take care of the next month or the next? It doesn't. My, my interest on that is that we're not, I, I wanna know what commitments we have transportation-wise into fiscal '20. Because I hope we don't have a lot of them, or there are ones that we can figure out and justify.
As that reads, it, this is the third year in a five-year contract.
So, it's gonna go beyond that?
It is.
It's not definite. We're, we're evaluating that. Most, I think all the contracts we're dealing with are, uh, in a third year of a five-year contract. But I don't know that we cannot, uh, renegotiate those contracts and stuff. We're not, uh, satisfied with that. Every contract's different. And, uh, we wanna standardize and have a consistent contract. And, and so, we're in discussions that, uh, we may ask to renegotiate the contracts and start from there.
Is that one of the contracts gonna be renegotiated based on, or damage, or performance, or whatever, or evaluation of whether or not they're delivering the services?
I think that's the basis, because we're, we're dissatisfied with everyone's performance that we deal with.
And then, the only, the only other thing I have is, is this benefits piece for Dental Plus, Dental Care Plus. Um, is this the first time the board's seeing this?
No.
This is, this dates back to?
Yeah, this was presented to the Finance Committee. Um, we put out an RFP for, um, our Dental Care Plu- for Dental Care. Uh, we've used Dental Care Plus in the past. They came in with a very generous offer, a discount, um, to remain with our business. Um, we did take this to the Benefit Committee as well, so there was discussion amongst our union groups as well. Uh, we presented it to the Finance Committee and asked for approval.
Appreciate it. I, I missed that.
No problem.
You know how I feel about the, the Benefits Committee bringing something, and then I was just rubber stamping. But if it's been presented to Finance-
Like two meetings going.
I, I appreciate that. I just missed it in the minutes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call roll. Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye. I should pull that one.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morowski?
Aye.
President Jones? Aye. Are there any inquiries or updates? Okay, just, I have two minor ones. Take a minute. Um, tomorrow morning at 7:09 a.m., I am doing a telephone interview with WVXU just to give them an update on the community engagement process for West Side, just so you know. Hopefully, I'ma wait. Um, and then, um, Ms. Copeland-Dansby has agreed, um, to represent the board in FC Cincinnati's groundbreaking on, uh, December 18th at 4 o'clock. Those are two updates. Any other updates? Inquiries? Okay. Assignments? Yes, sir?
Yeah, you know, I dare, um, I think everybody here probably got the letter asking the city if they were working, you know, there's tons of chatter. And I had a community council president reach out to me and say, "The city's working on a charter school. We don't want it. We'd rather work with CPS." And then, I saw the letter that went from the city that we were copied on. I mean, I think this is one more thing with the city. Like, if you're working on something like that, can you also let us know? So, could I make an assignment for our board president to just write a letter? Kind of asking that same question. Are you working with, um, establishing a charter school within our city? And could you share those plans?
Okay. Other assignments? Ms. Copeland-Dansby?
I'd like to, um, somehow make an assignment to have a report from our five members who serve on the preschool promise board. I don't know what that looks like, but just an update as to some of the activity. What I really liked about the presentation that we saw was just chronological order of activity. Like, if they've had meetings or things that maybe I've witnessed about, if we could just have a listing.
We would be happy to do that. Just for your information, uh, this year, there are books the interim director has been meeting with those five board members. Uh, maybe only three of them have attended the meetings, but she has scheduled those meetings on a regular basis.
I think that's fine, and I, and I just wanna be clear, the intent is so that we as board, we as the board can better support them.
Other assignments? Okay. Having no other business to come before us, I declare the meeting adjourned.
Ta-da.
If it's okay with you, I'll get-